I'd like to call to get to order the October 7th, 2019, public meeting of the Highland Park Board of Education. This is a workshop meeting, meaning that we will discuss the issues on the agenda but not vote until next week. Linda, may we have a roll call, please? Oh, I need to, oh, I am so sorry. Yes, I do. Perhaps we should just have you formally take over. I meant to actually annotate my thing here, so I would be clear. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger and posted on the board's website at least 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. Now, perhaps a roll call would be in order. Thank you.
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Ms. Simarusti?
Ms. Coleman?
Ms. Gowan?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Magaziner?
Here.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola? Mr. Roslevich?
Here.
Mr. Woodward?
Here.
All right, and I do expect Ms. McFadden-Dinacola to be here later, very soon. Be it resolved pursuant to the Sunshine Act, NJSA 10:4-12 and 13, the Board of Education will now meet in closed session to discuss HIV reports and discipline. These exemptions are permitted to be discussed in closed session in accordance with NJSA 10:4-13. Information regarding the board's closed-session discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Is there a motion to recess to closed session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll be back at 7:30. Thanks. Am I missing anybody? I think we're all here. Excellent. We good to go audio visually over there, John? Wonderful. All right. I'd like to move that we reconvene to regular workshop session. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's go. We're now going to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd like to stand, the flag is right there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, in this world of liberty and justice.
Thanks, everyone. Linda, were there any communications apart from what the agenda indicates?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you. I will move on to the minutes we have in front of us. Oh, you know what? We're not going to vote. This is a workshop meeting. For those not familiar, it means that we are going to discuss what's on the agenda, but we will not vote until the next meeting. So at that meeting, we'll be talking about the minutes of last meeting. Did anybody have any comments or changes for those minutes? Okay. And now, it's time for the student representative report. It's nice to see you guys again. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
So, in the high school, the high school had a very successful rollout of the Chromebooks, as evidenced here. At Back-to-School Night, which was September 26th, there were about 310 Chromebooks that were delivered to students, and there's about 100 more that still have to be given out, which could be even fewer now because it's been a few days. Sorry. So those that attended took part in the, that took part in the distribution, went to teacher-led Chromebook presentations, as well as a new meet-and-greet system where they were provided with a free Chromebook case provided by the HPEA. There were a few issues, but they kind of resolved themselves. I know at one point, like sites like New York Times were...
Is that ventilation?
That's rain.
Oh, it's rain, wow. That's quite loud during lunchtime.
So, sites like the New York, like New York Times was blocked, but it got resolved. So, no big issue there. Spirit Week is coming up. That's going to be October 21st through the 26th, and the Homecoming Dance is October 25th, with the Homecoming Game being the 26th at 2:00 p.m., which will also hold our Hall of Honors inductee ceremony. There will be nine distinguished alumni on the 25th in school with their special recognition in the auditorium, and then on the, during the game or a little bit before, they're going to get honored on the field.
So, the PSAT for 10th and 11th graders is on October 16th, and there will be a delayed opening for 9th and 12th graders. The Decadash is back this year, and it's on October 20th, as long with, as long, along with the Make-A-Wish Walk, which is on Halloween, so October 31st. And this past week, we had the Teen Pep Retreat, which had all 13 students involved, as long as well, along, oh my gosh, along with the Safety Ambassador's Retreat on the 3rd. And there will be a haunted house this year as a senior and junior class fundraiser on the 31st. And in the middle school, so the middle school Back-to-School Night was on September 24th, and the middle school Chromebooks will be handed out on October 10.
Over at Bartle, there is a major tree planting with the borough and the Shade Tree Committee. That would be a part of the $30,000 grant to the borough. 19 trees will be planted at Bartle on October 14th. And then the students will also be educated about those trees and how they're important to our community. They will also participate in the Keep Middle Sex Moving Walk and Bike to School Day on October 10th, as well as the Bartle School Week of Respect activities. It just, it'll be between, I believe, October 7th through the 11th, and they'll just have different themes throughout that week.
So, at Irving, the PTO offered tickets to Von Fund Farms that come, that were sold out. The kids enjoyed hayrides, a corn maze, among with other fall activities. They'll be participating in Keep Middle Sex Moving Walk and Bike to School Day on October 10th. And then they kicked off Week of the Respect with a concert by Mr. Ray, where he focused on songs that had to do with friendship and kindness. It was also World Smile Day, and students shared their smiles on a post-it note. Some activities for the rest of the week were wearing blue to stomp out bullying, chalk it up to kindness, allowing students to share their feelings or words using chalk during recess, and cards for kindness and helping hands. And students will wear purple on Friday to symbolize that they are united schoolful of students who care about kindness, friendship, and respect, and they are looking forward to welcoming 8th graders who will buddy up with our 1st graders, Sarif.
That is all.
Wonderful. Thank you, guys. Any questions for the students?
Well, not for you guys, but thank you. That was great. With the Wall of Fame, though, which interests me, because I think I was caught off-guard, I remember last year or two years ago when, when we, I guess, some of those folks were introduced at a football game. Is there an event that occurs before the football game that, and could we find out about what?
Sure. I'll be sure to update the board by email, and then again publicly. We do have a breakfast in the morning, I think it's the morning right after homecoming.
Okay.
Right after homecoming. And, yeah, at the breakfast, we honor those who've showed up. We hope, we've got a nice slate this year. Last year, we didn't have any nominees, so that's why we're taking a two-year hiatus. But I'll be sure to follow up with the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's wonderful. Thanks. And now, it's time for Scott's report. Please.
Okay, so the first thing I'd like to do is introduce a new face in the audience. We conducted a very thorough search for the next supervisor of curriculum instruction who'd be responsible for humanities. We had internal candidates, we had external candidates, but the one who rose above the others, thanks to committees of stakeholders, that included board members, paraprofessionals, yeah, we had some support staff, I believe we had one paraprofessional, one secretary on the first-round committee, and plenty of teachers. We identified Michelle Rodriguez, who's in the audience right now, to be the next supervisor of curriculum instruction. The board approved my recommendation for her candidacy in September, but she wasn't able to make the meeting at that time. So thankfully, she's here, all the way from my, my old hometown as superintendent, Kettown, Kettleworth, where she resides, is Michelle Rodriguez. So I'd like to have Michelle come to the podium, say a few words, and then I'm going to kick her out.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
So, I'm so happy to be here today. A little bit about myself, I grew up in a family where education was of the utmost importance and valued very much. And so it's not surprising that I ended up, as my career choice, in education, and that's where really my passion lies. I've been in Newark Public Schools for the last 18 years. I was a classroom teacher for 12 years, and during that time, I had the opportunity to have many rich experiences and memorable ones with my students, their families, my colleagues. I've been, for the last six years, a supervisor in the ELA department. I've had lots of different responsibilities and roles within that, but more importantly, I think part of that was supporting schools by helping them implement and create strategic plan goals, by helping them in terms of supporting and coaching their teachers and teacher coaches, and running PLCs. I also oversaw the implementation of our ELA curriculum and provided school-based and district-wide professional developments. I'm super excited to have been recommended for this position, and I'm very excited about joining the leadership team here in Highland Park, so that I'm able to work with the staff, the students, the families, and the community members. I wanted to read a few words from a literacy author, Stephanie Harvey, that really encompasses my vision and goal in terms of student learning. She writes, "We immerse our students in an inclusive classroom environment that honors their culture, language, and interests, stimulates their curiosity, and provides the time and resources to ask questions and search for answers." So, throughout our combined efforts, we can continue to increase student achievement in a positive and engaging environment where students have, where we're able to foster opportunities for students to learn about themselves and the world around them, and the different people that are around them, and different cultures, and the diversity... Sorry. To continue to develop and refine our ability to be able to meet the needs of all of our students, and to provide them with the knowledge, skills, and tools that they need to reach their full potential and be able to go out into the world and do whatever it is that makes them happy and whatever it is that they love every single day. So I'm happy to be joining the team, and I'm very excited to be working with all of you. Thank you.
All right, Michelle.
Thank you so much for coming, Ms. Rodriguez. We're delighted to have you. I wanted to know, I believe you're, is it trilingual? Spanish and Portuguese, is that?
I believe my Spanish is conversational.
Conversational?
I can get, I understand a lot more than I can speak.
Yes, yes. Well, so I hope our families, Brazilian and Portuguese and Spanish-speaking families will, you know, as you get used to the position, you know, feel free to reach out. We're delighted to have you. I, the personnel committee was present for the last round interviews, and it was just fantastic. And we had several great candidates, including our internal candidates.
Yep, absolutely.
We appreciate everybody who came out, and just thank you so much for coming.
Michelle begins in two weeks, two weeks from today. So we'll have a welcome breakfast for her, and I think what you'll find, Michelle's coming from Newark, big place, is that this is a small, warm, welcoming community. We're like the little engine that could. We really are. We try to do a lot, and we get a lot done. We have a lot of growing still to do, but you'll help us with that. So with that, I'm going to respectfully ask that you leave.
You're welcome to stay, of course.
I'm sure you've got something to do, but I'm going to kick you out.
Let's clarify, we'd love to have you stay, but no need.
Thanks, Michelle.
Good night, thank you.
I want to spend maybe five or 10 more minutes updating the board and the community on the matters we discussed at the last board meeting regarding the changeover of some of our bathrooms at Bartle, and then I'm going to transition to giving everybody a state of the state as it regards the mental health support we're providing our kids. October's Mental Health Month, I'm not sure if you're aware of that. And in recognition of that, we, as a district, will be hosting the New Jersey School Boards Association rollout of a mental health task force report, and I'll talk about that in a second. But first, let me just quickly update the board and the community on how we decided to move forward, after we received a lot of input from the community at the last board meeting regarding the change of at least one bathroom right now, multi-stall bathroom, to an all-gender bathroom. We, I should say, Miss Knapp, the principal, and I, but more Miss Knapp than I, has been communicating with the parents and the guardians, as well as the kids, in, at Bartle. We have officially changed the multi-stall girls' bathroom that is beside the gym at Bartle, and the band room, and my office, into an all-gender bathroom. What remains upstairs, Bartle is two floors, is a gender, a boy-specific and girl-specific bathroom towards the classrooms, and we still have a boys', a boy-specific bathroom next to the all-gender bathroom. So those of you who remember Bartle, you would walk through, through the main entrance, if you were to head straight down the hallway, I'm referring to the bathroom beside the gym on the left side at the end of that hall. We do have plans, as we indicated in the letter, to change another bathroom downstairs as soon as we can to an all-gender bathroom. We spent a lot of time reflecting on code, buildings and grounds code, the law, specifically 6A, as it applies to education. And then I have to tell you that we were truly a pioneer in this area. There might be one or two other schools doing what we're doing to this extent, but by frequent phone calls, not only with attorneys and building code officials, but also architects, had the board attorney and I realizing that this is like new ground for a lot of people. In fact, the code, the code that's out there doesn't, it hasn't caught up yet with the times, so. We met with the students, we met with the teachers, we brought in a group called Hi-Tops, which is a very well-respected organization based in Princeton, to help us and answer questions that the teachers may have had. And so far, it's been since Friday, we haven't had any concerns brought to my attention. So I think so far, we're in a pretty good place moving forward. So that's that. Now, I get that as a district, it wasn't easy moving in this direction, and we're not perfect, no, I don't know, many school districts that are perfect, had everything firing on all cylinders. But one thing that we're doing really well is providing our kids the support they need to be on good footing mentally. I just want to throw a couple of statistics at you to have you, have us all recognize what we, what we know anecdotally, and that is that a lot of kids are struggling with anxiety, with depression, with suicide ideation, and a host of other mental health challenges. In fact, the latest survey data that I could find shows that one in six kids between these ages, 6 and 17, are struggling with mental health challenges. So for us, district-wide, an approximate number of kids we're talking about is 292. Now, that's, that's the mean. It's not the, at least in my, from my perspective, it's the mean, the average, not necessarily an accurate reflection of what our children here in Highland Park are confronting. And this is another piece of the research that I thought was disconcerting, and that is that not only are more and more kids challenged by such things as anxiety and depression and suicide ideation, but there's also an alarming gap in the level of treatment that kids are getting from child to child. Now, in a school district, in a community like ours, in which almost 40% of our families qualify for reduced meals, and mind you, reduced meal qualification doesn't take a lot. We're talking about almost half of our population making a family of four roughly $40,000 to $50,000 income, living in Highland Park, which we know is not, I mean, New Jersey itself is not an inexpensive place to live. I'm sure our numbers are close to 50, 60, maybe even 70% of families that, who are struggling to make ends meet, let alone have the means to provide for mental health support, seeing a therapist, having the, the kind of medical coverage that allows them to see a psychologist or a licensed clinical social worker once or twice a week. So that means it's incumbent upon us to pick up the pieces as best we can. And the board and the leadership and the faculty have made it a real commitment, even more so over the last four years than in prior years, to change the culture, not just what we do, but the way we think and the way we operate when it comes to thinking about mental health. So for instance, a couple of years ago, when there was a, an active shooting incident in Florida, while school districts around the country, even some locally, were talking about increasing security by staffing buildings with armed guards, doubling down on drills, we were on, you know, besides, of course, making sure all our safety and security measures were logistically in place, putting a real focus on making sure that our kids felt mentally safe and that they were feeling connected on some level to their schools and to each other. The research that I've done, because one of my expertises is social-emotional wellness, tells me that, and it's not original research, it's just a collection of, of literature that I've, I've reviewed over the years, tells me that a lot of the problems that we're seeing in terms of violence, student violence, stems from disconnectedness kids have with their peers, with the adults in the school, and with the school itself. So what we're doing is, besides talking the talk and using certain language and, and responding to crises in certain ways, having our faculty in particular take a look at, at what our kids are bringing to us. The new buzz phrase in education is "trauma-informed." You hear a lot about "trauma-informed" now. There are a couple of new buzz phrases. That's one of them. I'd like to think that we are more and more becoming a trauma-informed school district. We've been engaging our faculty in book talks like this by Patricia Jennings, called "The Trauma-Sensitive Classroom." We've had our teachers, like these folks at Irving, working with those from the outside, like these actors and actresses from George Street Playhouse, to help our kids engage in play and role-play, and, and drama, to act out their feelings and be able to be expressive about their concerns. We're also, of course, building in concrete structures, like responsive classroom. By now, you know that your kids at Irving spend almost 30 minutes, on average, a day, a day in circle talks, in morning meetings. I sat in on a couple today, one in Ms. Lucas's first-grade classroom, and the one in Ms. Vargas's pre-K disabled classroom. And it's about these kids talking to each other, playing games that have interacted with each other, developing trust with each other. Responsive Classroom, by the way, has now been scaled up to Bartle. We were on some shaky ground a couple of years ago, but thanks in large part to Jen Knapp's immediate leadership, when she came on board as principal, she started to implement accountability measures to a greater extent, to be sure that teachers across the school were implementing responsive classroom in their classrooms. And they're all trained, and if they're not, we have been sending, I've been signing off on professional development requests, we've been sending teachers to workshops about responsive classroom. At Bartle, we've also brought back the, what was years ago referred to as the Social-Emotional Decision-Making Lab, but we now call the Skills-Building Lab. This is a partnership with Rutgers undergraduates through the Applied Psychology Department that has undergraduate interns, we have three of them now, spending every day for a couple of hours each day at Bartle, after they've been trained by Tracy Maiden, who's our new, as of this year, new, officially new staff and teacher support, staff and student support teacher, and by a name that some of the board will recognize, Vicki Potabekki, who is still around. Vicki was a guidance counselor back in the 90s and the early 2000s at Bartle, who worked with Maurice Elias and the undergrads at the Applied Psych Department to start the lab. Well, Vicki is now back as a consultant, helping Tracy Maiden train the undergraduates. We then graduate our students to the next level of connectedness, and that's to have them immersed, especially at the middle school level, in restorative practices. And I'm not going to talk at all really about restorative practices until next week, when Ms. Luxa, the dean of restorative practices, and three of her students, leaders, will be here to show you videos and demonstrate how they're running circle talks, 20 minutes a day, every day, in the middle school classrooms. Of course, you're aware of, because we have at least one still, are you a source of strength? Okay. Andy's a source of strength. We have brought back another, the wobegon group called "The Sources of Strength," that is, I think, about 22? How many students are there now?
A little bit less than 22, because we have to graduate.
Okay. So like, probably between 15 and 20. I don't know the exact numbers, but I know you have no less than that, 15. Students who've been trained by both teen center staff and some folks we brought in from outside, from Rutgers particularly, to become a source of knowledge and a resource for peers in their peer groups, even though Andy does happen to be a very popular student in our school. We have other students who are not necessarily your mainstream quote-unquote "popular" students, but are leaders among their own circles. These are the students we identified to be sources of strength, and we've trained to be go-to people for their peers in case they are in mental trouble, they're expressing suicide ideation, they're reaching out for help. Now, Andy and his peers aren't trained to do the counseling, they're just trained to connect their peers with the right people. And then finally, I just need to, to mention one of my pride and joys, and that's the teen center. The teen center is staffed by three full-time therapists, a licensed clinical social worker, a social worker, and a psychologist. And then we have, at any given day, two or three, depending on the day, Rutgers doctoral interns. Actually, we have one post-doc and a few doctoral interns who also provide clinical services for our students. So, I actually want to show you one example of what Sources of Strength has done, just as a visual of why these little things add up to a lot. You see here a, a moment I had when I was making the rounds, and you guys went around, I'm not sure if it was you or some others, putting post-it notes? What were those, affirmations?
Yeah, pretty much, anything nice, supportive, nothing too complicated.
Nothing complicated, just random positive notes that they were throwing like that one, "You Matter" on lockers. And here's a picture, actually, of our, of our sources. These guys did a workshop for other mental health professionals around the state last year, so they're doing some pioneering work. Let me just wrap things up by circling back to what I said at the outset. This is Mental Health Awareness Month, and to recognize the month, and to, I think, celebrate a lot of what Highland Park is doing, we will be hosting the New Jersey School Boards Association on October 15th. This is a picture of the task force, of which I served, I worked with two other superintents, and several board members from around the state, and officials at, including Larry Feinsod, who's the director of NJSBA at headquarters in Trenton, to develop a document that we're going to present to the legislature that demands, very concretely, certain things be codified in the law, and then have schools directed to follow that focuses, as we're doing here in Highland Park, on the mental health needs of our kids. So on October 15th, open to the public, and of course, the board, at 6:00 p.m. in the high school auditorium, there'll be media here, folks from around the state will come to, for the first time, hear about the task force's project and, and make that announcement. And I also want to add that any day now, the Star Ledger is going to be featuring our work in an article. They interviewed several faculty in our school district, so I'm proud that that'll be broadcast out there. I'll be sure to share it with the board, and I'll put it on Facebook when that comes out. And that's my report, unless there are any questions or concerns.
I just wanted to ask, because they were, to me, it seemed like it was presented as related, which I appreciated, but I don't know if that was, you know, on purpose, but it looked like the bathroom issue was folded into the Mental Health Month issue. I don't know if that was...
No, not intentional. I just, separate, separate reports, wanted to follow up one, an update.
Okay, because, well, I mean, I am, as you know, not a cheerleader personality. I am the critical I. So the letter that you put up there happened to reference students, and then it said that, you know, students, referring to students, they use pronouns, and it said "he slash she", and a feeling of safety and a feeling of inclusion. And that right there was, to me, a red flag, that these two issues, the bathroom issue as well as the mental health issues, are very much related because of, I mean, simply because the, you know, suicidal ideation statistics are very high in the trans and non-gender conforming communities of students, as well as adults. So while, you know, we can all be happy about the progress that we've made on the Bartle bathroom issue... bathroom issue, I do think that we haven't done what we need to do for staff, because we don't know if we have issues with staff using male-only, female-only, gendered bathrooms, and that is something that we should definitely, you know, include in our further conversations. And I would love for us to, as a standard practice, start using just the very simple pronoun "they" when referring to students, rather than "he" or "she," because I think that if we're talking about prioritizing inclusivity and diversity, we need to be aware that we cannot be gender-inclusive if we are only talking about boys and girls. That kind of defeats the purpose of having that all-gender bathroom. So I just wanted to highlight that, you know, because I added a dose of darkness for the evening, so.
I do have some data to share with you, to piggyback off what you said. So according to the National Center for Transgender Equality, forty-one percent of people who identify as transgender attempted suicide. That's forty-one percent. The percentage of people who identify as transgender who experienced violence or abuse from a family member, this comes from the National Center for Transgender Equality as well, is nineteen percent. Nineteen percent. And I have other statistics here, if you're interested, but you're absolutely right about the numbers. They're extraordinary when it comes to folks who are not supported.
Yes, so, you know, any minority group in our community is absolutely the priority, or should be the priority during Mental Health Month of all months. We're going to discuss mental health, so I thank you for your report, and I just wanted to highlight that.
I mean, I would love that. I think it's going to take us a while, but the subject of non-binary students, I mean, I think it'd be great if we could commit ourselves to attempting to use "they" where possible, you know, rather than, I mean, I myself, in my writing, am used to using "he" or "she" interchangeably, one after the other. I thought that was pretty, you know, progressive, to use, you know, alternate pronouns, but perhaps we should work towards "they" as a...
I agree. I'd be the first to admit that I live in a binary world in my head, and it's hard for me to break out of that. And much as I am close, and I consider myself an ally to the LGBTQ community, and I'm close to this issue, I'm just, I was born and raised in a bi, in a bi-gender world, and it's a hard thing to break free from. It's no different than the hidden biases that a lot of us, I think, bring to the table when it comes to interacting with people of other cultures. The same kind of a thing.
Well, let's be leaders and try to use "they" where we can. I mean, I will try in my minimal writings to the board, I don't do a lot of writing, but...
That's all we can do. That's all we can do.
And I don't know if you would want to consult with Keith, you know, about whether the staff would be interested, as Michelle said, in moving toward all-gender bathrooms, or one all-gender bathroom for staff members? That's probably something you could address with Keith.
Well, they've been very supportive of this whole effort.
Oh, no, Michelle was saying maybe staff themselves might want for themselves.
Ah, yes.
So that's something you could address.
We discussed that, absolutely.
You have, oh, okay, okay. That's a good point.
And I should add one thing. I did listen very, very intently to all the public input that we received.
Yes.
I did follow up and investigate any matters that were of concern to us, bullying of the bathrooms, or any other issue for that matter, so just note that we've, none of what was spoken about was left unfollowed up on.
Right. If someone mentions bullying in a public meeting, we do what we can to find out what happened and whether follow-up, well, follow-up is needed, whether further action is needed. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments about Scott's presentation? Questions? Okay, it is time for our committee reports, unless I'm wrong. Again, this is a workshop meeting, so we're just going to be discussing things and not voting today. Curriculum instruction, Michelle, are you ready to give your report?
Always.
Thank you. Thank you for your wonderful minutes, by the way. I just, I was going back through a lot of minutes trying to follow up on an issue, and you just had everything laid out there.
I, um...
It's beautiful.
Yeah. I often get into the weeds, so...
It's great.
You're noticing.
I mean, truthfully, I hadn't read everything in such detail until I really needed something, and then there it all was.
Yes, it's no Dostoevsky curriculum committee. Rightly so. Okay. Okay, so we had our meeting on the 3rd of October at 4:30 in the superintendent's office, and we were very happy to see that we had some visitors. We had Dr. Nikozia join us. She is the supervisor of STEM, for anyone who's not sure of her title, and Rob was there. Unfortunately, Monique could not make it because she was traveling. So it was me and Rob and Dr. Taylor, Dr. Nikozia, and Ms. Boudin was there, just for the purpose of observing, because she is earning a certificate, I believe it's a certificate, but it's in the study of her superintendent, yeah, career path, so. She was there to take notes, I suppose. So Dr. Nikozia was very thorough in her general review of the summer curriculum writing work that had been done, so bear with me as we run through all of this. The detracking sixth-grade math was the first issue at hand, and what had been done over the summer to move us forward on the path to detracking sixth-grade math was, there was a revision done of the fourth and fifth grade math curriculums that included a half-day training with Dr. Dan Beatty of Rutgers University, he's also a resident of Highland Park. He helped the staff, the writing, the curriculum-writing staff, discuss ways of implementing complex tasks, multiple points of entry for different students, so that would address differentiation in the math classroom, and also how to do rich heterogeneous grouping, so that all students participate in the task. Often, when there's grouping, as we know, in a practical setting, you know, one student is like the person who takes the notes, and like the secretary, and then there's the others who are actually tasked with some of the math and the project. So that was part of the PD, on how to get the entire group engaged and working on the math at hand. So that is something that Dr. Nikozia thought was really useful, presenting teachers who were writing the curriculum with intensive PD prior to their curriculum writing, because I think that she had said that it really does help to infuse a lot of understanding that might not have been available to them previously. So she is also going to suggest that we have, oh, no, I can't find it. Well, it's another visitor to discuss some other PD before they begin the science rewrite next year. Anyway, back to the math. K through five is going to include what is called calendar math, which is basically number sense routine, so that every day you address the calendar, and that you, you know, discuss different patterns and immediate recognition of numbers, all in relation to the calendar, but this would be part of the curriculum that's now for the kindergarten through fifth grade, so that it would be a cohesive kind of lesson that they would get used to, and it would build upon itself every day. The ideal was that we have the new 6A, which is math curriculum for all for grade six. The ideal was to have it ready for the 2020, 2021 year, and that is still on track, except that we still need time, Dr. Nikozia said, enough time to include the seventh-grade math in that 6A for all. So in the spring, they will continue, and the new curriculum for sixth grade, the all-inclusive, will be done and ready for 2020, 2021. There's still a lot of conversation to be had about that. There are some concerns, so Dr. Taylor just wanted to make sure that everyone knew it is still in the works and that we are up for discussion. But the real concern was, like, the repetitive nature of different units, like students doing a lot of repetition from grade to grade, a lot of time being wasted, or students skipping over entire units and then being expected to, you know, do seventh-grade or eighth-grade level math when they hadn't really completed it in a full school year. So those things are still in the works. At the middle school and the high school, Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry curriculums have all been rewritten over the summer. Dr. Nikozia wanted to note that Ms. Finklin and Ms. Powell did a fantastic job with the Algebra I, and that she could even tell, just this year, that even though the curriculum hasn't been rolled out, that their discussions in class have become more rich. So she was really excited about this update to the algebra curriculum. But of course, that's not just for the high school, that's also for the middle school. Oh, one important thing to note is that when the teachers rewrite the curriculum in Highland Park, there is a rubric that Dr. Taylor shared with us, where they have to meet certain standards for curriculum writing that include different sorts of modifications, built-in accommodations, and then it gets sent off to Suzie as the special ed director, and she reviews the draft of the curriculum before it comes to us. So I think that's important to note, that it is thoroughly researched and reviewed by the special ed director. We talked a little bit about assessments. Dr. Nikozia wants to make sure that there is cohesion in ways of assessing, but that there's also some creativity, so that teachers understand, these are the standards that we are testing for, but you can get proof of those things being met, proof of those standards being met in different ways. So there's no, you know, uniformity in assessment necessarily, and I think that that makes a lot of teachers probably feel more at ease, that they can get the information that they need in creative ways from their students, because not every student expresses themselves in the same way. Let's see, Geometry curriculum was redone, and Ms. Wyder, the high school geometry teacher, she was able to attend six weeks of Conker Math PD, which was really great, and Dr. Nikozia said that she also was clearly, you know, possessing lots of information from that PD that she might not have had before, that was very visible in the new geometry curriculum. So we're very grateful for that and very thankful that Ms. Wyder was able to do that six-week training. We also talked about the science curriculum at the high school. As a parent who has a graduate already, I was surprised to learn that chemistry is not a requirement for high school graduation. I didn't know that either. So we did talk about that, like, how did that pass by? Apparently, there is kind of encouragement for students to take higher-level sciences, or perhaps certain types of sciences, because that's what we know colleges might be looking for, but that's not always to the benefit of the student. You might not be interested in taking chemistry, you might prefer to take advanced, you know, biologies or other types of sciences, which would fulfill the requirement just as much. There is three years required in the high school for graduation, so, you know, we were talking about how we could encourage students to follow, you know, maybe some other paths besides just the standard chemistry that has been presented, and that led us to another discussion about how we might be encouraging students or discouraging students due to our ultra-complicated schedule at the high school. And so Dr. Taylor did speak with us about his intention to revisit different modes of scheduling for the high school. I, you know, I know that we have been trying very hard, the administration at the high school especially, to make sure that our schedule gives as many opportunities to the students as possible for electives, but there have been so many different requests for electives that have been denied, because, you know, lots of different scheduling issues. Basically, it comes down to scheduling. So I think that the issue of scheduling is now got the spotlight on it, and we did discuss maybe different ways of researching, how we could adjust our schedule to meet the needs of students, and let them really kind of, you know, guide their education, give them more choices. Let's see, I'm almost done. Ms. Fat McGrath was the writer for our K to second-grade Media Sciences and Tech curriculum, and she was able to fold that in to the standards that are available and mandated by the state. Dr. Nikozia also mentioned that herself and Ms. Fitipaldi worked very closely on all of the review and all of the rewrites. So the Humanities and the Sciences were trying to collaborate together on the process of rewriting. So I thought that that was really important to note, that the revisions are, they're really, what's the word? I guess there was, there was a big-picture view of all of the curriculum rewrite. Okay. Oh, okay, so this was a recommendation that I made during the committee meeting. We talked about the idea of recent graduates coming back perhaps, or lending us a little bit of opinion on how to improve our path to college and career, ways that the guidance office can improve, different ways that they felt they were underserved, different ways that they felt that they were uneducated about certain processes. And I know that we've made some improvements to that, we've had different community meetings, college-planning-type things available through the new teen center down on, what is it, 6th? So I know that certain people have put together different meetings, and we've tried very hard to address those needs, but talking to lots of different people that I've been actually working with at my new job, who are like nineteen, twenty years old, they have lots of good ideas on ways that we can improve our guidance process at the high school. So we did talk to Dr. Taylor about perhaps convening a committee, including those recent graduates, to talk about ways that they could have been served better, kind of like an exit interview, you know? Let's see, the music classes at the middle school have, you know, been a topic of discussion, so Dr. Taylor wanted to make sure that everyone knew that music class pullouts have been happening to provide additional music instruction at the middle school. Also, Mr. Werner and Ms. Chambers will be asked to sit on the hiring committee for the new middle school principal. Also, yeah, Dr. Taylor is going to be consulting with them as well about revising the schedule at the middle school for next school year, so that music is not forgotten or diminished in any way. The issue of Humanities versus STEM was brought up in our meeting, and we talked about whether or not it is an issue in reality, if it is a perceived issue, but we did settle on the fact that the current high school schedule does make things very difficult, so that if students want to prioritize one pathway or another, the schedule does present some major impediments. So we're going to, again, put that on our to-do list at the next meeting and follow up with that, and discuss ways that we can get some help. So there was another meeting where Mr. Krieger was part of a discussion that we had heard about during our committee meeting, and Mark had asked if we could receive hard data on student interest for electives. So what do the students want to take, what are they told is available, and why is it not available? We need hard data. So Mr. Krieger did ask for that, and Dr. Taylor is going to present more to us at curriculum in December. Also, we wanted to ask if this is a personnel issue. Do we not have the personnel to teach these electives that we are offering in the course guide? Is that a problem? We're not sure. So that was another question that Dr. Taylor is going to follow up on in our future curriculum meetings. The schedule is also an issue we recognized when we talk about heterogeneous grouping and detracking classes. We want students of different backgrounds to be in class together. We don't want to have the same twenty students together all day, traveling in a school within a school, which I know has been a problem forever. See a lot of nodding. So that... So that is something that we wanted to acknowledge and that we are going to talk about again. Bringing in some fresh eyes from the outside was something Dr. Taylor suggested that we do, so I think that we're going to try to do that, and hopefully we'll have follow-up in December for you. The Health curriculum is the next issue. We talked about one of our parents, Lucinda Holt, who is also a sex ed educator at Rutgers University. She helped us to find a free curriculum resource so that we are in compliance with the concept of consent in our Health curriculum. Bodily autonomy, consent, it's been an issue that we talked about a lot, but especially at primary grades. You know, keeping your hands and feet to yourself is kind of a really primary example of bodily autonomy and consent, but it also does, if it's taught properly, it does prevent terrible things from happening, sexual abuse issues and other types of abuse. Teaching children this at a very early age is very important, and the state obviously gets it, so we are going to be in compliance with that. Thank you to Lucinda Holt for providing us with that curriculum. That is going to be something that we put into our lesson plans from kindergarten through 12th grade, and Dr. Taylor is going to be checking up with the Health educators in the district and asking to see lesson plan copies to ensure that that is actually happening. The concept of mixed-gender health classes at the middle school came up, and there is some debate still happening there. We did do some conversation in previous months about other school districts in Middlesex County. It is not mandated anywhere that students be separated for lessons on puberty by gender, especially since we acknowledge that there are students who are gender non-conforming in our district, they do exist. We don't want to force them into rooms where they feel uncomfortable, and that would happen if they were, you know, forced to choose between the male puberty class or the female puberty class. I mean, I don't really know how that would work in practice, we did discuss that. So that is still a topic that is of concern. There are some discussions to have with reference to personnel that are involved about whether or not there is agreement on how those classes should be run. And again, we will revisit this conversation in November, following Dr. Taylor's research on the topic. But I think that best practices are available out there, so we're going to do our research and make sure it's on the books. Middle States accreditation was discussed at our meeting as well. I don't know that I have much information about that, except to say Mr. Lassiter is proposing that we pull out of the process of becoming Middle States accredited. It is costing us several thousand dollars annually, and he is of the mind that this does not hold much value for us. So I'm looking forward to hearing more about what Middle States accreditation actually means, what we might lose out if we get rid of it, and Dr. Taylor did say he would have information for us later, hopefully tonight, I'm not sure, but hopefully. And he might want to talk to the Guidance Counselors to see if any admissions officers at the colleges or universities that our students have attended in the past have input on that. You know, does it prevent our students from graduating with some sort of, you know, accreditation in earning a future degree from that college? So we will discuss that hopefully later. Also, the Chromebook rollout, we wanted to know how is it going so far? And Dr. Taylor did say that he would put together a committee of sorts of parents, residents, and students, just to give us some idea of how much this is helping or hurting. Is it helping our homework situation? Are teachers able to use the Chromebooks to the students' advantage? So we're going to be getting an update on that in November and December, according to however the middle school rolls out. And that, my dear friends, concludes my committee report.
That was amazing.
That was really long, but thank you.
Did you want to go through the agenda, or is there anything? It's very short, it's probably pretty self-explanatory.
I just got a quick question.
Absolutely.
As I turn my face to look at it.
You were planning to talk about electives in December. In the November meeting, do you still have slated the discussion of Irving and play-based education?
Yes, thank you for bringing that up, yes.
Okay, well, I plan to be there.
Absolutely.
So nobody else on the board?
I will send out the invitation to the entire, no, I'll send out the invitation to the entire board, just so everyone knows, to look out for the notes.
Okay.
The principal of Irving is going to be joining us for that meeting.
Great.
So I don't know if we'll also have our supervisor of Humanities, because she might not have much for us, you know, but the principal will be there.
Fabulous, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. McNally will be at the meeting.
Yes. And just so everyone knows, we have field trips, item number two, we have the Conversation Cafe, item number three, and item number four is the STEM curriculum for 1920 school year.
And I'm sorry, you actually had just mentioned all of that in your presentation, except the field trips and the Conversation Cafe.
I kind of did.
Conversation Cafe, that's awesome. Folks should come.
Absolutely.
December 5th is an additional date. Is info about the Conversation Cafe on the website for families?
Not on our website, no, but on the Rutgers Graduate School of Education website.
Well, if you're, I mean, isn't it partly to serve families in our district?
They do direct reach out. So Nicole Tross, our Title III Coordinator, reaches out to those families directly. We get a great number, great turnout.
Yeah, no, it seems really lively.
We used to have, in our two-family house, we had tenants that were a part of the Conversation Cafe. They found out about it through the library, because they had one-to-one English lessons, like ESL for adults at the library, so I think it's posted there.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Can I ask a quick question? On the sixth-grade math for all, is that, is that for all? Or are some, the faster-moving kids, are they in the for all, or is there a separate?
Everyone will have sixth-grade math for all in the 2020, 21-year, as far as I understand. We're waiting on the seventh-grade standards to be added to the current curriculum. So there's additional things to include there, but really, it's expanding what's current.
I mean, I kind of think, I wonder, there are some sixth graders that may be ready for eighth-grade math.
Yes.
I'm just wondering whether, whether they're still taking sixth-grade, you know, for all in the same group, even though they may be ready to be doing more advanced work.
Right.
Is that going to frustrate them or not challenge them properly?
What's, what's happening, as I understand it in the spring, is that the seventh-grade standards will be folded in, but also there will be additional information for students included in the seventh-grade curriculum. So it's almost as if the advanced students who are currently in the sixth grade, perhaps ready for eighth grade, they would be able to revisit some of the things that they might not have gotten, because when you are doing advanced math work, sometimes there are units that are completely skipped over. So you can, you know, for example, you can take Algebra I, you can take Geometry, and then Algebra II. You might forget some things from Algebra I that you need to revisit before you can really succeed at the Algebra II level, that you might have forgotten when you took the Geometry in the middle. So I think that, from my understanding, the spring is when they will be folding in additional curriculum that students might need in the sixth-grade for all. That includes seventh-grade standards, but it could perhaps include other things that would be typical of eighth grade, because eighth grade is when they start Algebra and Geometry.
I'm wondering if, Chris, do you have any?
Can I interject with a general statement? Just a real general thing? I mean, just to let you know, Rob, there's been a lot of dialogue going on about this, and there's a meeting on October 15th, I think, of the Math Redesign Committee, and I think we should definitely have like a really thorough board discussion after that. But yeah, Chris has been one.
Well, I was just going to ask Scott to clarify. I think the official title of the course is 6A for all. Is that correct?
We haven't determined the title of the course yet.
That's the working title.
But it's, the A is for Advanced, and it's Advanced for All. And as you're describing, the seventh-grade standards, part of them will be part of that 6A for all.
Correct, at this point. I do need to also add that when we refer to "all," we're not talking about every, you know, all 125 fifth grader moving to sixth grade. We do on occasion have a small group of students who are prepared for algebra in sixth grade, in sixth grade, and we will make those accommodations. We had a few students who took Algebra II Trigonometry with the high school students in eighth grade.
Right.
So, I mean, we're a small enough school district that we can nurture individual students at their needs.
Can we do that? Can we?
Well, this is, this is also related to the scheduling issues that I raised, where if we had a schedule that was cohesive between the middle school as well as the high school, we could have students going from the middle school for math into the high school, and then coming back again and joining their middle-school peers for other classes. So that's part of the scheduling conversation, and it would be great to, you know, get you involved in that, Chris, if you wanted, because I think that being a college-level math instructor yourself, like, you would know how the schedule might look to get, to get kids where they need to be, when they need to be there.
It's always very complicated.
It is very complicated. We need all the help we can get.
Chris has pointed out some questions that I have about, well, first, and is, from his perspective as a university-level math professor, what kids need to be learning in K-12, what they need to be not skipping, what they might need to be accelerating through if they are math gifted. But what, that made me realize is I was very behind on what's going on with the Math 6A for all. And I hope that after the upcoming 15th, the meeting on the 15th, Chris is part of that committee. I don't know, Michelle, are you on the Math Redesign Committee?
No.
Ruth, you are, yes. So hopefully you'll be able to attend, I don't remember what time it is. Hopefully after that, we can get some information from you guys about what's going on, and we should schedule a time at the board table to ask questions and...
Anybody's welcome to join us, it's, I'm not saying anybody, you know, as many of you who can, we can accommodate.
Without a quorum.
The meeting is going to be held on the 15th at 3:15 in my conference room.
Okay.
Dan Batty will be there as well, he's a Rutgers professor who's been, who specializes in this area.
Yeah, I'm planning to go too. We should check in with each other.
At the table.
With these meetings, like this, this math meeting and the play-based discussion for Irving, for kindergarten, if more than four, I don't know, I'm just curious what the ruling on that, can additional board members sit and monitor without taking part? Can they come and listen?
Technically, yes, but our attorneys advise against it. And always, the letter of the law is no decisions can be made about, that will affect the interest of the public without prior announcement 48 hours in advance. So obviously, if you're sitting in the back listening, you're not making decisions, but our board attorneys advise us to be very cautious with that, and not all be present in a room at a meeting, five people. So, you know, my preference, if somebody has a really strong, if somebody has a strong need to be there and it's going to be a quorum, let's just talk about it, maybe we could do an advertisement.
I can't be there.
Okay, there's one person who can't be there. Oh, I'm sorry to hear that.
Three of them.
Hmm, do we need to make sure that it's scheduled the next time at a time when you can come?
No, because it has to be scheduled when the teachers in our district are available, not when teachers from other districts.
No, I know, but, I mean, I don't know if there's money available to see if teachers could, I just, okay, okay.
And we shouldn't, as Scott said, or as you said, Ann, we shouldn't have any discussions now, I mean, maybe we can answer some questions.
Sure, yes.
Those of you who know this, I don't know much about it, but we should talk about it once there's more formal proposals and more formal discussion having been made, so we can, actually can answer questions, and we have a plan going forward.
Right. We, it's a little bit, I mean, it's difficult, because the administration has been working on this for two years or three years now, two years, two and a half?
The committee's been in place for two years, we started talking about this three years ago.
Right, and definitely, certainly, the board table, we've talked about it, but some people like me, for example, had some sort of naive ideas about what math detracking meant, and now, now it's becoming a reality, I found, prompted by Chris, that I had quite a lot of questions. I'm a huge proponent of detracking, but I, I sort of understood it better when it came to history and English and literature.
And we still intend on having a parent forum, much like we did when we rolled out the transgender policy and had a safety night forum. We'll do the same thing with this approach, too.
Scott, maybe at the neck, the first meeting, the November meeting after the October 15th Math Redesign Committee meeting, we could do some sort of a, I don't know if Christine or anybody's ready to present to us, but we could at least have a brief board discussion, maybe a presentation from board members about what they learned at the meeting. I don't want to preempt Christine.
It's possible, if you don't mind, I'd like to see the outcome of the, what the outcome of the meeting is first. Are you going to be at that meeting?
I'm going to try to, but if, if there's already five people, I will defer.
So I'll confer with whoever is there from the board to determine if we're ready to speak more about the matter. We've been meeting, the committee meets once every other month, so if we don't speak to the board, full board in November, it'll be January.
Sure. I don't know if I, I don't know if we need, I don't know if we need a, you know, full presentation in the near future, but I do know that board members should probably be brought up to speed, so that we're not, we don't find ourselves being like, what, what's happening?
Especially, I can't be there at this October 15th meeting, and I would like, as the head of the Curriculum Committee, to know something about what the decision was, or maybe, you know, what the process is going forward.
Yeah, maybe we could have like some news bulletins at upcoming meetings, like, this is what we did at the last meeting, here's what we're thinking, and then we can all confer amongst ourselves individually.
That's what I do, I like that.
Yeah, check in, right, so we don't find ourselves, I mean, I was just very embarrassed when Chris said, I have this question, this question, this question, oh, so that, others might feel the same way.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. I forgot where we were in that discussion, are there more curriculum, sorry.
No, I think we're done.
Excuse me? You're pointing, are you pointing that we're done?
I think we're done.
We're done? Okay. Oh, oh, yes, you're pointing at your own, please, maybe we have the finance report and facilities. I'm going to step out, please don't be offended.
Finance committee met early this evening. We went over the agenda, we also went over report items with Scott and Linda.
Sorry.
So the first item on the, on our agenda was the staff, number of staff from this past year, what was budgeted, and the actual teaching staff this year. So we did budget three fewer teachers this year than last year.
Oh, okay.
We, in fact, had to hire one additional teacher, so the actual number is two, so we have two fewer teachers on the roles this year than we did last year. And then, and this was questions from a, from a community member, and that was, how many openings do we currently have for teaching positions? And that number is four. And those are all advertised as we normally do, so we expect and anticipate that we will fill all of those positions quickly, reasonably quickly, depending.
As quickly as possible.
As quickly as possible. So we discussed a program from New Jersey called the Smart Start Program, which will update all of the lighting in all of our schools. We're going to start with middle school, and we will receive from the state $9,426.76 to upgrade all the lights in the middle school to LED lights. So we both get new lights, it gets paid for, and they're LED lights, so they're less expensive to run and more ego-friendly. And then we'll go through the other schools and replace all the lights in those schools. So this is great, this is a great free program from the state. And thanks to Linda for working on this and finding it. We went over briefly the unforeseen revenues and expenses as we do every month, so that's a topic, an agenda topic that we, that we go through every month since I've been finance here four years ago. So, you know, looking at it, what did we budget? What are we getting that we didn't expect to get? What expenses are lower than we expected to get, and what expenses are higher than we expected? And the answer to this for this month is, not much has happened yet, so we don't know. The one thing we do know is that we budgeted $100,000 for foreign exchange students, which we've had in the past. We have had foreign exchange students from China who pay us $20,000, the government pays $20,000 per student. This year, we have none. It's not a surprise. I know a fair amount about the situation with China. My wife has done consulting, she's an education professor, she's done consulting in China, her contacts in China pretty much say all programs have put, have been put on hold by the Chinese government since our excellent trade war, sarcastically said, started. So we're not very likely to get those students, and so we're expecting, at least in that area, to have a shortfall, unfortunately. Let's see, the enrollment report was attached, we have 34 students less than we had in the June report, and that, that's not unusual. People move in, move out, but typically, at the beginning of the year, we have some number of fewer students. Better number is a decrease of 16 students from the same month a year ago, and that's been slowly going down, I mean, very, very slowly going down. So we had a few years ago about 1,650 students, we now have about 1,600 students. That matches the report done by the Finance Committee on Demographics, where we reviewed the demographic study three years ago, done by a professional demographer who expected us to be up to 80. us to be up to 1,800 or 1,900 students by now, which made no sense to us. So we did a better count of the number of new developments and people moving in and people moving out, and that number, 1,600, matches very closely what that reevaluation by the finance committee showed. And a number like 1,600 versus 1,650 is not, is not a bad number, it's probably a reasonably good number. When we start getting up to 1,800, 1,900, or 2,000, it becomes harder for the district because we're not, we're not getting the state aid that we did at one time, and that is in, is in our formula for receiving, and we're really footing the bill completely. So these numbers are not unreasonable. And we will be getting, we didn't get this month, but we will be getting reports on a regular basis on out-of-district student placements for special education, because that's such a very large expense for the district. Back of the envelope on what we've seen so far, seems like we will actually spend less this year than we expected, but we'll see as the real numbers come in. But every month, we should have numbers like that, that show us how many students, what the costs are, and you'll see in the report on the agenda that follows. So that's my very short report. And I'm going to talk now about the items on the list. So item two is the typical cafeteria bill list. Item three is a resolution to approve travel and related expenses. Item four are contractors. The first, one, two, three of those are fairly typical and standard, but items four and five, which are the Title I non-public or after-school, non-public tutoring or after-school instruction, those are pass-throughs to private schools, so we don't pay for them. We pass them in our agenda, the state gives us, gives them the money but passes it through us. Item five is a approval of an out-of-district placement. You can see the number there. The annual tuition rate is $65,000 plus. That doesn't include summer, it does not include transportation, so you can see it's very, very expensive. And that student, or perhaps the next student, I'm not sure which, are changes of placement. In other words, these are students who already were placed out of district but in a different school. And so we're now looking in these cases at having large additional expenses that we didn't anticipate. Item seven is bedside instruction. Item eight is a settlement, and this settlement also has to do with an out-of-district placement for a student that had a three-year, a three-year contract with the family, and we're renewing that contract for three or four more years until the student is of age where we are not sending them out of district any longer. And then there's a donation from donorschoose.org, so thank you. It's to the Bartle School and the grantee is Catherine Lydic, and it's on math manipulatives, make math fun and exciting. That's very hard to say. Tried my best. And that's our report.
Wonderful. Questions, comments?
Going back to the LED conversion?
Yes.
That was entirely at no cost to the district?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, how often does that happen? That's nice. All right, you're actually going to give me a number there, three times. You look like you were, the wood was burning, you were going to, that was a rhetorical question.
I had the same reaction, to be honest.
I'm sure there are a number of times.
It rarely happens, we get anything or nothing, especially from the state.
There must be a string attached. We'll find out what it is in due course. No, you don't think so? Okay. All right, personnel communication, that is me. We discussed a number of matters. One was hiring in general. We discovered, okay, let me drop back, we've had community concerns about the direction of our sort of program, whether we might be sort of moving the program, our program of study toward humanities at the expense of STEM, and, I mean, I think, as everyone knows, that is not our intention to do, we're not trying to move in that direction. Nonetheless, we are going to be trying to keep better track, a more systematic record of which teachers leave, when, for what reasons, and whether we have reason to believe that there are institutional reasons that might have given, that might have contributed to their departure. Often when a teacher leaves, it's because they moved to Ohio, for example, but perhaps there was a contributing factor having to do with working conditions. So we need to really create a spreadsheet, a database, that gets that information down so we can see if there's anything we are doing or that we could do to ensure that certain teachers are not, are not leaving.
So a meeting tomorrow is going to take place with what we call our central leadership team. That is comprised of members of our Teachers Association, HPEA, members of the board will be there, I'll be there, we have at least one principal there as well, and then leadership from the schools. And this is going to be the first item we discuss. So I'll report back to the board, probably under old business, as soon as possible, maybe even next week.
That's wonderful.
About what we, what we deduce from the worksheet that I prepared.
Thanks, and I think going forward will give us information, too, even if there's no real pattern now, we'll see if one develops in the future. We also discussed, I know, I think you're going to be on the next agenda, two meetings from now, you'll have on the agenda, the proposal that we hire a consultant to help us with expanding our recruitment pool to include more minority candidates, and Elsa to work on retention of minority candidates.
But that's going to happen on November 11th.
Okay. So when it comes to retaining and recruiting teachers, it might behoove us to have, in particular for teachers of color, Latino teachers, to have a plan that makes sure those teachers feel supported, you know, to the extent possible, in a, in a district that's largely white in the teaching staff, that there may be special concerns for those teachers. Anyway, at that November meeting, the proposed consultant will come in and give us, I guess, a proposal, what she thinks might be useful for our district.
Absolutely, yes, I'm just confirming November, I think it's the 11th.
I think that's right, yep.
Yep.
Sorry, Ann.
Oh, yes.
I, um...
Did you already read all of this?
No, I have something that you were asking for in my hands.
Oh, look at this, oh, I did not know this.
So I, I don't remember when Dr. Taylor gave that to me, but I believe that it was during our September curriculum committee meeting.
Trying to think if I saw, you know what, I think I did see this, too. I'm sorry, yes.
Just so everyone knows, that's the proposal from the consultant that would be coming for, you know, this program that Ann was just talking about.
I think I saw part of this, but not the whole thing. Thank you, this is great.
Yeah.
Okay, so she'll, we'll hear more about this, I don't know if this was an initial draft or...
I think that was an addition, that was an initial draft.
That's great.
From what I understand.
Okay, this looks...
That's basically, you know, what we might be looking at, but I can, I can add that to my report for next time.
That's fantastic, that'd be great. All right. There you go. All right, so we'll be hearing about that. So that's to address some of the concerns, or at least to respond to some of the concerns that members of the public and members of the board and the administration have expressed regarding hiring and retention. What was the next thing I was going to say? Something I wanted to mention. Okay, also regarding hiring, we have discovered, after consultation between the board and the administration, that we have been having a problem with our AppleTrack job listing platform. So if you go to the HP Schools website, you go to District Information/Employment, it takes you to a third-party contractor, AppleTrack, which lists jobs that are available. It turned out that AppleTrack was automatically removing certain postings as of the application deadline. So, for example, we are enthusiastically searching for a Spanish teacher. AppleTrack unfortunately removed the Spanish teacher position posting last week sometime, I believe. We figured out what happened, we rectified it, we hope it won't happen again, we'll keep our eye on AppleTrack, but if people were worried that we weren't actually looking for a Spanish teacher, we were, we just had a little issue. We also, I mean, I know, you'll see on here, there's a proposal to hire a new media specialist for Bartle, and when we did that, we were very successful in reaching out to community members who sort of are knowledgeable media specialists for places to list job, for places to, specific specialized job listing boards that we could use. That was very helpful to us, and I think we need to develop that for all of our specialist hires for Spanish language. I know we did a lot of work around this for the French teacher back last year, and we still were not successful in hiring one, but I think we need to get that going for Spanish to figure out where the Romance Language graduates are looking. I know you've spoken with our contact at the GSE at Rutgers, correct, about this?
I have. I had a meeting two weeks ago with Merrick Curran and Nora Hyland. Nora Hyland's the Director of Teacher Preparation. She said they're struggling to encourage kids to pursue a world language certification. They're going private sector, her words, private sector, because the economy is strong and it's, there are more lucrative positions available than through the education track.
But they're so much less interesting, so if anybody's out there who wants to be a Spanish teacher, and if anybody in the community has connections in this regard, please, please contact Dr. Taylor, because we really do want a Spanish teacher. We're very grateful to our other existing Spanish teachers who are teaching extra periods, who are teaching larger classes, to try to make the middle school Spanish program work. But we will be reaching out, I hope that we'll be consulting about how to reach out to other job boards, other listing sites, national search posting places, to see if we can...
Although we've had the most success with NJSchoolJobs.com, the media specialist that we're getting got the position through NJSchoolJobs.com.
I see, I see, all right, so, is that something...
Young people are flocking to social media and media sites, it seems to...
And are all these other jobs on NJSchools...
So the system, so the AppleTrack system has been designed for us so that as soon as we punch forward a position, it automatically goes to, I think LinkedIn is like the only site it doesn't go to right now, NJSchoolJobs.com. I can actually tell you, as you're doing the report, I'll pull up the...
That's fantastic.
I can see at the back end where it's actually going.
I wonder if it would behoove us to put more information on there, give a little bit more of a hard sell about how fantastic our district is. I know, like, on the AppleTrack site, what the public can see from the HPSchools.net page is like very basic, Spanish teacher, you know, experience preferred. Is there anything we can do to write in there, you know, we are a fantastic, diverse community of enthusiasm? I don't know. We don't have a human resources department, so, and I'm not a human resources specialist, but I wonder if there's anything we can do to boost our, the ambiance...
No comment, I'm just going to look though to see where, I mean, unless you want a comment, I...
No, no, I'm just, I would ask you to consider whether perhaps we can make our listings perhaps more attractive, or if you think that would be useless because people are just looking for Spanish teacher, Spanish teacher, Spanish teacher. I don't know, but, you know, as a lawyer, when I look for new jobs and someone says something interesting in the job listing, that makes me excited. Yes, Chris?
We should put in, all our kids are above average, right?
I think we should put that, yes, yes.
There you go.
That's perfect.
All right, so I'm going to continue to look to see where we, how, where we push out.
And I know you would take into consideration my suggestion regarding advertising ourselves more enthusiastically in our listings. You will take that into consideration, yes, you will. Taken on board and greatly appreciated.
No problem.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, so the Spanish teacher listing is back up, that's, that's that. We're not trying to get rid of the Spanish program, we are very much expecting to hire a Spanish teacher as soon as possible. Okay. Something else I said to ask Scott about, no, okay, go onto the agenda now. Let's see, it's mostly pretty pro forma stuff with a few exceptions, some medical leaves of absence, maternity leaves. We are regretfully, regretfully, regrettably, no, both, regretfully and regrettably, saying goodbye to our middle school principal, Mrs. Semier, and we wish her well as she moves forward. Let's see, we have some more resignations, we have Ms. Rodriguez coming on board, if we, if the board votes, I know, we did vote on her already, I'm sorry. So we have Ms. Rodriguez coming on board, not on October 17th, but on October 21st. We have a motion to appoint a new media specialist at Bartle. Did you want to say something about her, or should we wait till the vote?
She said she's currently employed in New Brunswick, and she's actually finishing her emergency certification as a media specialist, is her second career, and, I could speak more if you'd like me to pull up her resume, but that's the gist of it. So we're waiting for her to put her 60 days in and go through that process, and as soon as the board approves her hire, which will be next week, I assume.
So maybe next week you could say a little bit more about her.
Absolutely.
I mean, I know, I'm just very relieved and I really appreciate you pushing hard to get a real media specialist. I know that she's an emergency cert, but she's already employed as a librarian in New Brunswick, is that?
Yes, currently in New Brunswick.
So it's not her first run as a media specialist?
I believe she's a middle school librarian.
Yeah, so she's, she's not without experience in this field, despite the emergency nature of her certification. Ms. Krebski, Krebski, am I pronouncing that right? Krebski? We're going to, we'll be moving to appoint her as supervisor of funded programs and district initiatives. Oh, I'm sorry, we've already appointed her. Excuse me, this is just to appoint her as affirmative action officer. My apologies, I thought we'd already appointed her. More pro forma stuff, stipends, Schedule B appointments, correcting titles, six periods, when our teachers, when our high school and middle school teachers teach more than five class periods per day, correct? Our contract specifies that they receive extra salary. I think that means with five class periods, right? They might be here for other periods for prep time or other things. So number 23 is teachers teaching additional class periods. That includes Mr. Staben teaching additional period of Spanish, because we don't have a Spanish teacher yet. And, ah, and Ms., is it Ms. Soler? I don't, I don't know her, but she is also teaching an extra period, or more than one period, of Spanish at the middle school until we have someone. So thank you to those staff members. Appointments, resolutions, all pretty self-explanatory, let me try not to miss anything interesting. I think that is it. All right. Anybody have any questions or comments about personnel?
I did want to ask about the media specialist, but I don't, we'll just wait till next...
Oh, we can do it now, too? Go ahead.
I just, I just wanted to know more general information, because all that's available on the agenda is...
Well, her resume is in the personnel folder.
Okay, okay, I'll take a look at that, thank you.
I know you were very impressed, though, right? You said you were, which is great.
That's wonderful.
Yes. We were worried we weren't going to get somebody at all, we'd have to find someone who's totally untested as a media specialist, and I'm just delighted that we have someone.
I mean, if you'd like, I could pull her resume up now.
Maybe we should just do that, yeah.
Okay, let's do that. I don't know why I said that.
Sure, we can do that. I mean, I just know that when, when I go down to the conference in October, which I'm so grateful to be able to go again this year, I learn so much, and one of the presentations that I attended last year was given by three media specialists, and I wasn't aware that they are trained to work the Naviance program.
Oh.
Look, see, they perked right up. So media specialists actually have a lot of different training that we underutilize from, from this presentation, that's what, what I gained, and that they might not be the most extroverted people, they might not come out and say, hey, let me do the Naviance for you, like, they just might not, and, and so that was, my takeaway from that presentation was that media specialists are not librarians, per se, they really are, you know, like eight-armed specialists that use tech and, and the written word to express different things, and they can really help with curriculum writing, which I really appreciate it, because they are experts in research. And so if you want to know best practices, or if you want to know what the standards are, or if you want to know where to find different websites to enhance your lessons, you can talk to the media specialist, so they can really be used in many different ways that we haven't been using them. So I look forward to this new hire.
So Kristin is working at Woodrow Wilson in New Brunswick. She teaches 19 different class sections from grades K to eight, so it's 27 visits per week, so she's not only at the middle school, but she also pushes down to elementary school. I mentioned this is her second career. She was initially a biology professor, an adjunct at Kane at Union County College. Prior to that, she was also a teacher of biology at the Votech schools. I asked her why she decided to go into media and she, her response was, because I got frustrated seeing my students do research ablyssally on the web, not recognizing what the good sources are, what the, what the poor sources are. So I'm sure there were other reasons, because I can't imagine somebody who just completely go into a different field, but she certainly was enthusiastic. She received her master's in biology at Montclair, and she's doing her work as a library media specialist, because she is emergency certified, which means, by the way, she had to take a standardized assessment, she had to go through the formal application process, but when she secures her first position, she begins the coursework that takes her through the process. And right now, she's doing that work at William Patterson. She already has 12 credits behind her, and she expects to obtain her emergency cert by the end of the, this school year, 2019, 2020.
She's not certified yet?
She's emergency certified.
So you said she would be getting her, she'd be getting her regular certification?
She'll be fully standardized, she'll have a certificate of eligibility, which is the pre- pre-step to being standard cert. And all of our new teachers come out with that certificate of eligibility. They actually come out either with a certificate of eligibility, which is the alternate route slash emergency cert process, or a certificate of eligibility with advanced standing if you go the traditional route. So no matter what you do, when you get out of graduate school now, and almost all programs are five-year programs in which you get your master's in education, you have to spend at least one year out of the tutelage of a mentor, the district designs, and then you get your standard certification. It doesn't change a lot in my mind, except it just, I guess, reflects the fact that this person had another year under his or her belt.
So she'll have her certificate of eligibility, I'm sorry, her.
She'll have her certificate of eligibility with advanced standing when she's done with her emergency cert.
Got it.
Which is, so she now has a certificate of eligibility.
And emergency cert.
AKA emergency certification.
Oh, that's the same thing.
Yeah, so, so for, so when you look up alternate route education, that's another pathway people can take on the DOE website, it will, it will use that phrase, but the specific terminology is certificate of eligibility.
I see. Got it, thank you. Other questions and concerns?
I have a, I have a concern.
Go for it.
It's, it's twofold. One related to the resignation of the orchestra teacher. The first part of it would be that we find a replacement in a timely manner so that we can have the, the winter concert. I know two years ago, I think it was, where we were unable to have the winter concerts because of the timing of the, of when we found a, we had an interim replacement and the timing was just off, so there's no time to prep for that. But the secondary concern I have is that with the music in the middle school right now, I, I feel like there's maybe not a lot of incentive for an orchestra teacher to look at Highland Park High School as, as a destination, being that there might not be such a great pool of students coming into the freshman year next year, unless we actively look at changing the way things are, the dynamic of the music instruction in the middle school, you know, and press that so that we have a strong program in the middle schools, that we have a strong program therefore in the high school. Because otherwise, I feel like we're not going to be pulling the right kind of orchestra teacher that we want for the high school unless we can show that we have that kind of commitment during the hiring process.
So I agree with you. Three things I want to share. One, I have, I met with the music department last Thursday and I strongly encouraged either Mr. Coleman or Ms. Chambers to join the, or both of them, to join the principals interview committee, either round one or round two. I'm waiting for them to get back to me. If I don't hear from nobody in the week, I'm going to follow up with them. They need to be on that committee so they have a say, some ownership of the process. The second thing is, I think it was alluded to earlier, I'm going to be taking a more directive controlling approach to the scheduled process. And I think, I think your point's a good one. Perhaps I need to personally be involved in the search process to some extent, since this is like a DEFCON four or five situation. And I need to let those candidates know that I'm going to be directly involved in the scheduling, that I, you know, have a musical background, I mean, I have an intrinsic motivation to make this work better next year. And, you know, and they should also know that there will be colleagues on the search committee to be sure we find a principal who's also committed to this next year. So that's my three points to that. We cannot change the schedule this year, it's unfortunate. It would mean a wholesale change if we restructured the day to incorporate more time into the, more than 30 minutes into the program. But I definitely think if we look ahead, then I should be the person, I should be the spokesperson for the department. I think you would agree, right?
Yeah, that sounds great. Thank you, Scott, Rob. I mean, there is a place where we might want to say something in the advertisement, you know, that we are committed to rebuilding our music, you know, something of that. I mean, really, that's something to think about. If there's a concern that people in the community believe that we're not committed, I mean, I don't know how much people here think about Highland Park outside of our little neighborhood, but if there's a concern that orchestra teachers might say, I'm not applying to Highland Park, then maybe that advertisement needs to say something really affirming about how we are so committed to our music program and, you know, blah, 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 blah. You'd have a real, you'd get your foot in the door.
We have 30-minute daily, I mean, I at least need to put out there, we have 30-minute daily periods, we have weekly, if not every other week, depending on the student's schedule with the teacher, pull-out lessons. That's new this year. I need to at least push that with the new candidates and tell them we're going to do even better going into next year.
Right, right.
I do, if, if you're done with your report, maybe this is a good time for me to very quickly update everybody on the principal search for the middle school.
Yes, go for it, please.
I'll just give you the skinny version. So we've established our interview committees. We will begin interviewing the likely 10 candidates we select from the pool. Right now we have 59 applicants. The closing date is the 18th, which is next, I think, next Friday. The first round interviews will take place over two days, October 28th and October 29th. I'm looking at my, my, my committee. I've got 16 people on the first round committee, including a number of teachers. We have two parents, supervisors, and then I'll be facilitating that. Oh, and one paraprofessional and the secretary, the principal secretary. The second round, during which we'll likely meet with three or four people max, is about 12 strong now, and that includes the board personnel committee, two parents, and again, leaders and a few teachers. So I'm mixing up the committees this time, whereas I had a very lockstep process. First it was the teachers, then it was the board, now they're integrated. We, the committee should have a finalist to recommend to the board by November 11th, that, who will be voted on November 18th and hopefully can start January 21st. We will be, I will be recommending on next week's agenda that Caitlin Brady be the interim principal, so that while we're conducting the search, there's some continuity. I must say the faculty was very supportive of that. They were looking for continuity, somebody who knows the school. Those of you who've been on the board for more than, I've been here as superintendent, recall the round, the revolving door of middle school principals that we had. I think there are a lot of staff here who remember that period and don't want that to happen again. They can help it. While Ms. Brady is the interim principal, we'll be looking for an interim assistant principal to cover for her position. And so hopefully everything is wrapped up by January with a new person on board. Okay? Are there any questions about that process?
No.
Okay.
Excellent, thank you so much. And I think we're on to policy, am I right? Am I skipping anything? All right, Mark.
So the policy committee met on September 24th. We took a solemn vow to go through a serious number of policies that we've discussed for a while and try to put some of these important policies on the agenda. I particularly like to bring your attention to the eligibility of resident, non-resident students, considering we've had questions about residency from some, some families in the past. And this spells it out much more clearly than what we've ever had before. Also, the open lunch guidelines in the, for the high school, I don't think we had a policy at all, but we will have a policy once the board passes this. And we crafted it off of a policy that the school boards association gave us from another, or Strauss Esme gave us from another school district, which is pretty ludicrous, so we really had to rewrite this from scratch. To go out of school in that district, you had to like the school district on their Facebook page, for instance. So we didn't think you had to do that here. And so on. So I, I would, it's tedious, it's long, and it's difficult, but I really would like for everyone on the board to read these, review them, and give us changes before we vote. We vote next week will be our, our first reading, and then a month from now, our second reading, November, whatever the date is, 18th. So there is time, but we need, you know, we need suggestions, changes, errors, get, get them back to us. And we have a whole list of new ones to start going through. Either items where the law has been updated, or we haven't had a policy, or there have been changes outside the law which really need the policies to be changed. I'm not going to go through them one after another, there's just too much.
On open lunch, I, we do have, we used to have, I don't know if we eliminated it, we do have a policy now, correct?
I didn't see a policy when I looked it up. There might be one, I might have missed it when I looked it up.
I'm sorry, on what subject?
Oh, no, we have a board policy?
No, there was no open lunch policy, but there was a protocol that you guys.
Yes, there was.
Right, but we never actually had a board policy. And in fact, we're carving out something new.
It might have disappeared, I couldn't find it, it might be there.
No, we never had it. And it's been our board attorney.
Let's say we had one as of about 10 years ago, 15, five.
At the board level?
Five, 10, 15 years ago, yes.
Anyway, we have a protocol for it, it's just as good. I'm not trying to change anything, but we need to.
There was a lot of discussion about it at the board.
Mr. Lassiter was concerned when he started seeing people drive off. Like, it's been happening for years. Since the invention of the car, I'm sure when there was open lunch, students were driving off to McDonald's or wherever. But he finally came back to me to ask for a policy.
Wonderful. Any other questions or concerns about policy?
Please, please email me during the week.
Yeah, and I, I want to bring special attention to the attendance policy. Because we did a lot of talking about that, and so input is welcome.
Well, the attendance is the.
Regulation.
Regulation.
Yes, right.
And I, I don't think it's here, the regulation.
It should be. If it's not, I'll make sure it's on next week's agenda.
Yeah, it should be.
Should be.
Correct, you're right about that. I'm sorry, that's our fault.
Do we know, Mark, do we have the number if people want to? I don't even know if it's available anywhere to the public.
5200?
Sorry?
I'm sorry, regulation, the attendance regulation?
Yes, which, what is it?
Anybody can find it on the web if they go to the board link and follow the policy links, that you just type in attendance, but.
And that shows regulations and policy?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, there's two options. So just keep in mind that the policy is the broad language, the regulation's a very specific language, and we've been continually tweaking it over the last, I don't know, half year.
Half year.
But I'll be sure that we put it on next week's agenda.
Okay. And members of the public can search under attendance.
I missed that it wasn't here.
I missed it wasn't here too, and I've forgotten what number it is, but, Mark, do we know the number? Let's see if we can read out the number so board members and the public can find it.
Oh, you mean the numbers of these?
The number of the policy, the policy number. I'm sorry, excuse me, the regulation number.
It's regulation 5200.
Oh, it's regulation.
I remember by heart.
Yeah, okay, all right, I should have, regulation 5200 is the one that we're going to be.
Right, if you plug that number into that search window under the board link on our website, if we follow the path to the policies, it'll bring the regulation and the policy up.
So just wanted to encourage board members to actually do that, to search 5200 and check it out, because that is an important one. And I certainly didn't remember what it was. And of course, anybody in the public who's interested in our attendance policies should, should do that as well, because that really does affect our students. Other questions, concerns? Were you finished? I'm sorry, did you have?
No, not to beat a dead horse, but I can tell you when we, there was a lot of discussion about the open lunch in 2001.
Okay.
What was the discussion? What would that mean?
Well, it was after 9/11. There was, there was a lot of discussion about what, what the policy should be, what changes we needed to make in order to be able to track students and make sure that they were safe and we knew, knew that they were on or off campus.
Right.
So that, that changed an existing policy, but that was, that's, that's when that was changed. Now, if we completely eliminated a policy and that, I wouldn't know.
That's odd.
That would seem odd to me.
Why would we have eliminated it?
You never know.
Yeah.
I'm going to look it up right now.
Yeah, let's see if we can find it. Maybe it is in there somewhere.
I could have missed it.
I also could have missed it.
It's been on our list, otherwise.
This was a policy though, Mark, not a regulation, right? The one that we're talking, okay.
Yes, it's a policy.
That's really strange. I don't understand why we would have gotten rid of it.
I don't understand.
Maybe it was misnumbered or something. All right. Further investigation before next week? Yeah, that's, that's interesting. I can't imagine us ever with pulling back a policy that spoke to safety and that's, that would be odd. All right, any other dead horses or live horses? Anyone? Policy? Yes.
Policy.
Okay, yeah. Equity. Monique is not here. Did someone want to give the equity report or?
Well, we did not meet, but there was to be a, a meeting, I believe, Scott, with public safety.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to share.
Okay, yeah, one.
So it's tomorrow. What Mr. Magazin is referring to is a meeting that I am holding with the police chief, the police captain, Joe Cribello, and Monique, the chair of the committee, to do a second review of comments that the Equity and Excellence Committee made on the memorandum of understanding between the, between law enforcement and the schools. Every year, school districts have to sign this, will sign on to this memorandum. The board and I had some concerns that we addressed in these notes. We are allowed by the Department of Education to attach an appendix to the document. We can't actually amend the MOA itself. So I met with the police department about a month ago just to give them a heads up, and they didn't have any concerns about most of the changes. There was one thing we're going to discuss tomorrow, but I'm sure Monique can report out to the board on that, but that's tomorrow after school, after school hours, about 3:30, that that meeting will happen.
Great, thank you. Anybody have questions, concerns, statements, political positions? No? Okay. I believe then it is time for a public comment. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Board policy 0164 and 0167 establish and regulate the right of the public to participate in public meetings. Please come up to the podium and remember to write down your name and your address. Unless you are a student, you can just write student. Thank you so much. Coming up.
Hi, so my name's Leora, I'm a student, and I just have a bunch of points. I'm here to talk about the music program specifically. And just to kind of recap, because I was here last month as well, it's really important for the music program to have a good, in the high school, it's good, it's important to have a good feeder program from the middle school, because middle school is where you learn all of the important basics of music and just how to enjoy music. And personally, like, we had one of our first days of class in choir, like, back in September, and just the difference from, because we've, now we've had time to build up a strong music program in the middle school. So seeing all the freshmen, we were able to do sight reading factory, which is a service, it's like a program that we use to sight read music, which is where you like look at the new piece of music and you say, oh, these are the notes that's on that piece of music. And then, at least for choral singers, we can sing those notes and allows us to learn music a lot faster. And having that advanced sight reading ability, learn just, enables us to sing better pieces and to sing more advanced pieces, making our concert repertoire better and more advanced, better to listen to, and also enabling us to win more awards and trophies to bring back to the school. And that's just kind of the thing. And you mentioned that they had been cut to 30 minutes? I thought they were 20 minutes. Do you verify?
I was told we increased the time by 10 minutes, so you have a total of 30 minutes now.
Okay, that's better.
Daily.
Yeah, I can't say though, like, as a student in the school, it doesn't feel like the school district respects the music department, really, because a lot of times when we're called upon to maybe sing at an assembly or the homecoming game, we're not given that much advanced notice. much advanced notice, so while I know the school alma mater and the National Anthem, because I've been in choir the past three years, some of the newer people might not, or the transfer people, and it's hard to learn a song quickly for the next, in the next day or two, in order to perform it at a school event, and it, that's kind of my case, where it's really important to have a good feeder program, and I was wondering, what have you done since the last meeting to fix the middle school program, besides adding the 10 minutes?
I mean, what have we done since the last meeting to respond to the issues, I mean, I know we have added the 10 minutes, so is it, Scott, am I right that it's 30 minutes every day, 30 minutes?
So it's 30 minutes every day for four days, and the fifth day, I believe, is a full period, it's a rotation period of some kind, but I know, I was told you have 42 minutes on Fridays.
Okay.
So it's 30 minutes for four days, 42 minutes for Fridays, that's the only thing that has changed since the meeting, we were able to add the 10 minutes to the 20 minute block, I was told when I met with the music teachers last week that they had begun to pull out rehearsals, the lessons, apparently the schedule has been resolved, that's not something which we added on, it's something that had already been planned, but I do know that it started to take, I was told it took effect last week.
Okay, yeah, I also just wanted to, like, advise, again, while we're talking about scheduling, advise against pullouts, because it's harder to sing with a full choir if you haven't sung with them before, because of pullouts, you only have a small section of the class, you don't have the entire choir, that's my understanding.
The pullouts, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, the pullouts are in addition to the full group meeting, is that correct?
Correct, so the pullouts are the small group or one, one-to-one lessons that happen once a week with students.
It's not a substitute.
Aside from the ensemble.
Yeah, it's not a substitute for the ensemble.
No, it's a separate, and that's actually, that is standard practice in a lot of schools.
Yeah.
What I would like to see, more standard practice as we revert, what I'd love to see, my vision would be full periods every day, you know, remember, three years ago or four years ago, we had, we had before and after school ensemble, we never had it in the day, I don't know how long that, that was for, I know I inherited that, when Mrs. Osemier came, I think in her second year, she was able to build music into the program, but it was every other day, so it was 42 minutes, but every other day, they didn't do pullout lessons back then, I don't know why, so, while we've been able to somewhat improve the program, taking that hit that we did this past year is obviously, in the eyes of people who don't remember the history, it's a big deal, I mean, it means now we're going, in the eyes of people who don't know the past, it's like, we go, went from 42 minutes to 20 minutes, so, I guess, I guess the point is, bottom line to your question, it's in addition to the ensemble.
Yeah.
That's a long-winded way of answering a question.
Pullout, anything is hard, because, I mean, for choir, you can't sing with the rest of the ensemble, I'm just, like, continuing to make the point, because I want to finish the thing, but, because you can't, because a lot of choir is blending with the entire section and the entire choir, it's hard to do that if you're singing without the entire choir, and also, a lot of students have trouble if they miss a class, or portions of a class, like, I get it's not ideal, but yeah, and then also, just like, kind of, switching up the music, kind of curriculum, not curriculum, but scheduling and everything that kind of comes along with it, is, I personally think part of why we're losing some of the most wonderful and amazing teachers in the school, because I know that the new orchestra teacher, that has resigned, but I haven't talked to him about it, but he was a great teacher, wonderful, and it kind of sucks, because it feels like this is what kind of pushed him away, and, yeah, it sucks. Also, different note, when you mentioned about the pronouns in the forms in them, there's, I mean, I'm just kind of like, pointing out errors now, but in the open lunch form, there's a lot of inconsistency in the pronouns used, like, throughout the form, there are, sometimes it's she slash him, sometimes it's he slash her, sometimes it's he slash him, like, he slash her slash they, and it's just kind of a mess, and I was just recommending that someone look through the forms and create consistency in that.
Could you raise up with Mr. Lassiter, or whoever prepares the forms?
I wasn't sure who did, sorry.
Yeah, no, 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 that's a great idea, I don't think, Scott, would you have seen that form, probably not, yeah.
But, and, the form is actually in the new policy.
Oh, it's in the new policy?
Yeah, you're putting an old form, and
I'm sorry, perfect.
The policy has a new form in it, that's supposed to match in design of what we're doing, so I'll take the responsibility and make sure the pronouns are correct.
Forgive me, that is in fact our job, sorry.
But it is a new, it is a new form that's supposed to match the, the, what's, what's in effect for the open lunch, but it's not the old form attached to our new policy, so I will look at the new form and make sure.
I read through and signed the old forms, that's the one I'm working off of.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
And there are also, like, you know, while we're mentioning typos, there were a few in the papers and packets, do you want me to mention those?
Which, which paper packet are you talking about?
Both the, hold on, both of them?
What was the packet?
Oh, the meeting stuff?
Oh.
Oh, in a policy?
Mail, mail any, mail any typos you see to board, seriously, to board@hpschools.net.
That'd be great.
I'm not going to bore you guys with it up here.
Yeah, board@hpschools.net, that'd be great, thank you so much.
That's my piece, thank you.
Oh, thank you, we appreciate the comments.
I think I see a budding student representative on the board.
Uh-huh.
Couple of years from now.
Not a senior yet, okay.
That was terrific.
Thank you.
I wonder though if we could, you know, make it a clerical task, to just, you know, do a clean sweep of all of the forms.
Of all the pronouns?
All of the forms in district, I, I don't know if it needs to be codified in our TGNC policy, but, you know, if, you know, maybe we should, because, again, mental health, inclusivity, all of that, like, it does get into the nitty-gritty of, like, how forms are presented to the community.
I could see that being a, like, a summer task that I can have somebody assigned to do, and look at all, like, do an audit.
I mean, Susan, I hate to ever
Put that on the table.
But she is so thorough and efficient at doing those tasks, I think she could probably get it done in five minutes, the way that she works, honestly, like, she's amazing.
Julie Nutter.
Thank you.
Hello, Rob Scott.
Hello, I'm Rob Scott.
Please proceed.
I'm a resident of Highland Park and a parent of children in the middle school and the high school, I'm here following up on my testimony at the September 16th board meeting, and at that time, I expressed my concern that the curriculum in the middle school and the high school is being tilted away from the arts and humanities, I pointed to the fact, for instance, that this year, there's no ELA, English Language Arts electives in the high school, and then there's also the issue with the debacle of the middle school band schedule for orchestra, orchestra band and music, this latter issue, I think, suggests a, kind of, a lack of prioritization of the music program, or at least a lack of involving the music program teachers in, in critical issues, I think it should be completely uncontroversial that the district must serve the needs of all students, and that for many students, those needs include arts, music, humanities, and I think it should be pretty obvious too, that social and emotional learning goals, like those put forward in the OWL program, can be achieved in these courses, and this means that, I think, even in very dire budgetary circumstances, we have to find a way to fully support music, arts, humanities in the district, and I, I believe this is honestly something that the board agrees with, so since the last board meeting, the orchestra teacher has resigned, and I think this is kind of a, a warning sign, and I think it was obviously caused, at least in part, by the great schedule debacle, so 20-minute music classes simply do not work, they're a joke, and unfortunately, the new schedule, the new 30-minute schedule, it steals time from classes before and after the OWL music periods, and, this kind of makes things worse, because the new 30-minute periods involve a disruption as the sixth and eighth graders tromp in, after the sixth graders have, or the seventh and eighth graders, sorry, tromp in after the sixth graders have started, furthermore, to create these 30-minute period, time is being stolen for those students from the adjacent periods, and these adjacent periods are also when other pullouts, like, for instance, reading assistance happen, so this kind of compounds the chaos, so what I'm asking is that fixing the schedule and hiring the new orchestra teacher be top priorities, we can't let this current debacle kill the orchestra program, like the retirement of the French middle school teacher was used to kill the French program, or how an English teacher resignation has eliminated ELA electives this year, so finding a new orchestra teacher and fixing the schedule immediately, I think, are inextricably entwined, no qualified candidate will be interested in the job unless they have at least 40 minutes to work with, I think there is a simple solution, we can just return to basically last year's schedule, this meeting's cutting all other periods from 46 minutes to 43 minutes, so the periods are just four minutes longer than they were last year, not a huge gain, they'd still be one minute longer than last year, students would have three minutes to pass between classes, and then the OWL period, or the OWL slash music period, could be expanded to 43 minutes, and, I have prepared a supporting handout, sometimes this stuff is hard to visualize.
You sure you're not on our payroll?
Should be.
Thankfully, no, since Dr. Scott.
So, on the handout, you'll see the current schedule, this is from the letter Ms. Osend out a while ago, and then I've drawn in, like, a couple of crude boxes there, those, those represent the 30-minute periods, and then you'll see the arrow pointing to the squigglies, that's the zone of maximum chaos in the known universe, where there is overlap between the two groups, and then you can see that for the, the seventh and eighth graders, time is stolen from seventh period, in my household, what that means is that is the typing.com do now in Makerspace, so at home, then, from 3:30 to 3:40 is the makeup for that, possibly the most horrible 10 minutes in my daughter's life, so far, we haven't had to do that, things are just getting rolling, so what I have below is, well, why not this, this is basically, pretty much what last year's schedule is, and what it would mean is, students would go to all their classes in the same order, it would just be that the OWL music period is longer, and the earlier periods are starting a little earlier, ending a little earlier, and the key thing is, is that the high school lunch, as I understand it, is 11:20 to 12, so the music teachers will still be able to do their lunch, pullout business with high school students before they go, or before the middle school students come over for, for band and orchestra, now, there's probably other issues, but, I really want to push the administration and the board to ask the administration to, to, to go about fixing the schedule now, because, well, I write, like French teachers, psych English teachers, unicorns, orchestra teachers are also rare and hard to find, and if we want a good one that's going to inspire students as well as pass all the background checks, I think we need to make ourselves a really attractive district. So fixing music is an emergency, and there's also other stuff that I think we need to do, and it was really nice to hear a lot from the board, that it looks like two or three committees have taken up the issues of some process reforms on high school scheduling, so we can at least start getting some data on what students' real preferences are for schools, so, I look forward to seeing come January or February, perhaps, all of the eighth graders and high school students being surveyed about what their, their real preferences are, and then the board getting that information to make planning decisions, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Scott, if I could respond briefly, as I think you know, we did task the administration with coming together with a plan that would allow our high school students and incoming high school students to make ordered lists of their elective preferences based solely on what is currently in the planning guide, without any sort of advice about what anybody thinks they should take, or what would be the best elective for you, or what probably, or probably will not be offered, so, Ms., Dr. Taylor has committed to working on something like that with, with Mr. Lassiter, so the board and the administration will know for sure what students want, and of course, we did discuss the caveats to that, it may be that we know full well that students want creative writing, you know, history of the trombone, and African-American literature, in that order, but, you know, we don't have a creative writing teacher for some reason, or we're out of money, you know, it might not get us where we want to get, but at least we will have the information in front of us, so we can do our best to get there, rather than people hearing contradictory information about something's not going to be offered, or who wanted that course, or someone didn't want that course, there does seem to be a fair amount of misunderstanding going on among students and others about what courses will be offered and why they will or won't be offered, so, Dr. Taylor is going to work with Mr. Lassiter, report back to us about that, and hopefully, we will at the very least get that hard data from every single one of our students before schedules are planned, in terms of what Rob said, what Dr. Scott said, I, I'm not competent to evaluate this plan, I mean, sure, on its face, it looks better than the zone of maximum chaos in the known universe, I do notice that sixth graders would have to eat lunch at 10:16 a.m., but I guess they, they did before, so they can do it again, Scott, can you at least report back to us formally and informally, as you prefer, on why we can't move to something that involves longer periods, I don't, I mean to put you on the spot right now.
I'm not going to report on this yet, but I'll enter into the conversation in March, April, when we begin to work on the next iteration of the schedule.
And Dr. Scott, I know is talking about changing things now, and I know you said that's not possible, I wonder if we could at least discuss that, possibly offline, you and I?
Perhaps, but I'll, I'll go on record and publicly state, I am not confident that we can change the schedule in the middle of October.
I hear you.
Especially with an interim principal at the head of the ship, I am comfortable, however, revamping the schedule going into next year, and definitely considering this template.
I, pardon me, but I'd like you to at least think about doing something before next year, because this schedule on its face, at least, looks, to me, and I think perhaps others, to be better, especially for the arts, so, I, I think it's worth a discussion.
I had no idea, Scott, that we were stealing periods, we were stealing time from periods before and after the OWL slash music periods, and that sixth and seventh graders, I didn't even follow everything, were sort of tromping in the middle of periods, that's a complication I was not aware of, and I know that does sound like a problem, among other issues.
But, when we first heard about 20 minutes, we were as upset as, as anyone in the audience, and, changing it to 30 is, is a good way to move forward.
Yes, absolutely.
But, I, I think thinking out of the box and trying to solve it sooner than later is not unreasonable to at least think about and talk about, that's all I'm suggesting, Scott, and I think if we do that, we might have a better solution for our students sooner rather than later, and, that's all I have to say.
And I'd like to just add an informal second, and also, just to say, today is October 7th, so today's the very, very beginning of the school year, and the idea of kind of giving up on this now, all the way through June, and thinking about it for next year, to me, I think it does bear some discussion now.
I agree, especially knowing as I do, yeah, informal third, you're welcome, Scott, for all this input that you didn't ask for, I, I will say that, especially knowing for my kids that the OWL periods are really just getting started, it sounds like an incredible positive development, but, you know, it's been, it's taken a while to get everybody trained and to, you know, to find students who would be available during the OWL period, not in band or chorus, so there, there's still a lot of, a lot of pieces in play with regard to the current schedule, so I'm not sure that it would be such a huge change, we're still sort of trying to get used to the, the current schedule, so, yeah, I also would appreciate it if we could at least discuss, thank you, Scott, for your patience with us.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Yeah, no, it's, but it's important.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you for coming up.
Thank you, and thank you for the attention you guys are paying, I'm, I'm piling on with the music stuff tonight.
We need a name, please, I don't know who you are.
Kristy Lutz, I am the parent of a, a child in the middle school, specifically middle school orchestra, and I just wanted to ask, I have my own statement, I also have a statement provided by a community member who couldn't be here tonight, is it okay to read hers as well? Of course. Okay, I'll do mine first, and then I'll follow with hers, so, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, again, I'm here primarily as a parent stakeholder who is very concerned about the dismantling of the music program in the middle school, I fully support the statements being made tonight by others regarding this, and, as well as the letter that I'll be reading, and again, thank you for your obvious concern about the music scheduling and, and the complications that have ensued, Rob and I actually crossed some, some subjects here, so I may just skip over a little on mine, I don't think I really need to tell anyone that musical training and education helps develop language and reasoning, aids in emotional development, teaches discipline, helps develop creative thinking and spatial intelligence, and improves self-confidence and communication, but bringing it home to Highland Park, there are, I believe, about 50 middle schoolers in orchestra, and then if we combine band and choir with that, we're looking at and choir with that, we're looking at approximately half the middle school population participating in the music program. So, why all this destruction? All that happens in a 20-minute music lesson, as we had, is tuning and setup. And the schedule, as it stands, to create 30-minute lessons instead, as Rob said, having, we're having 6th and 8th graders being pulled for orchestra 10 minutes before Owl, and 7th graders being pulled 10 minutes after Owl. That makes a complete wash, really, by the time they actually get to their class. Nothing can really be done between the tuning and setup, and then breaking down for each group. The pullouts, my daughter and some of her friends have actually opted to come in on extra early mornings, so they don't have to be pulled out of their core classes. For my daughter, that's world history. So I don't think this is a choice that middle schoolers should feel they have to make, and they shouldn't feel guilty about having to make a choice between participating in the music program they love and going to one of their core classes. It's too much of responsibility. Our kids should not have to, at this age especially, come in so early as well, just to compensate for cuts to the program. On top of that, the orchestra kids are receiving less challenging pieces this year, because the time is not there for them to learn the more challenging pieces that their instructor knows they're capable of learning, as they proved to him last year. Despite prior budgetary challenges, our kids placed highly in regional competitions, but this year, I'm hearing that there's no money for the middle schoolers to participate and compete. And this is hard on the kids. My daughter and some of her friends really love the experience of getting to go to a competition, participate in this bigger thing, and represent Highland Park at a competition. The music program should not be treated like a second-class citizen. It should not be part of a default period that are used for Owl, homeroom, pep rallies, et cetera. It's inconceivable that the music teachers were not brought in to discuss scheduling challenges, or notified of cuts in the changes that were brought about, in part by adding Owl to the curriculum, until two weeks before school started. And I appreciate, I think there's also been just a lot of confusion and questions around the Owl program, and how it relates to music. And I do appreciate that we're going to get some better explanation of the Owl program coming up, because this whole few weeks of school so far have, I think, created so much, so many rumors, and just uncertainties, and why is this being added and this is being cut? And so the communication is very much appreciated. And lastly, I'll note that the orchestra kids and the parents are devastated at the loss of Mr. Martino. But none of us can actually blame him, given the drastic cuts in in- in scheduling. We fear that with the schedule at hand, as Rob said, we will in no way be able to attract a skilled and dedicated a teacher, and also, as our student present said. And we worry that with his departure, the claimed inability to find a qualified teacher will once again be used as an excuse, or seemingly as an excuse, to not hire a replacement. So I also strongly urge you to consider the scheduling and recommendations that Rob Scott has put forth tonight, before we lose the music and humanities classes, and the elective so crucial to our kids' intellectual and social emotional development, and across the socioeconomic status, genders, and cultural backgrounds of our kids. Thank you. And I also have a statement.
I was just going to say, thank you for that statement. Moving on.
I just have a briefer statement. This is a letter sent in by former board member Judy Pietrobono. Good evening, Highland Park Board of Ed members, and Dr. Taylor. Thank you for the opportunity to have my letter read this evening, since I am unable to attend tonight's meeting. As a parent of children who have graduated from the Highland Park School District, I have the perspective of looking back and seeing how much the music program impacted their lives. My older son discovered his passion for the trumpet and classical music during middle school and high school, and chose music education and music performance as his career path. He learned that discipline and dedication to one's craft is essential, and that is a lesson that all students who participate in the arts learn, no matter what career they pursue. For my younger son, choir was the first group activity he joined, and his self-confidence blossomed being part of something bigger. Without a doubt, the music program, even small as it is in Highland Park, enriches our students' lives in so many ways. So when I heard that there had been a change in scheduling that impacted the music department, I was so disheartened. I was also surprised that it happened so quickly, a decision made without anyone that I know of hearing about it until the fall schedule showed up in the mail. While the past is the past, I strongly believe that it is critical for the district to step up and find a solution, and to learn from this. The middle school program is a feeder to the high school, and making changes that would discourage students from participation down the road, or slowing down their progress during three years of middle school would be a terrible path to continue down. Music should not be an afterthought. It should not be thought of as an elective. It should be an integral part of the school day, where students can go to express themselves, learn and grow as potential musicians, or as music lovers. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you so much. I did want to, oh, yeah, Chris, sorry.
Just while we're talking about the music program, I mean, I don't want to ask Scott to respond to the proposal right away, but there is an issue that Dr. Scott brought up, about whether, you know, some sort of schedule change would make the music teacher, or attract a better music teacher. So without asking you to respond specifically to the proposal, like, for those of us that are relatively new to the board, what kinds of issues determine the length of a class period?
What precipitated this?
No, no, like, what kind of issues are involved when you decide how long a class period is going to be? Is it contractual? Does it have to do with whether the other teachers will be able to cover the material?
Now, the only thing we're bound by contract to do is give teachers a certain number of periods to teach. There are minutes probably outlined in the week, but we can, it's really not a variable that heavily influences us, so it's us.
So it's a question of whether the other teachers will be able to cover the material that they need to cover in that amount of time. Is that right?
Correct. Yeah. I mean, some of the constraints we have are sharing of staff between the schools. Obviously, I've mentioned this before, I'll say it again, what precipitated this problem is the budget. I directed the principal to make changes to the schedule that would have pulled out, that pulled out electives, essentially, because we couldn't afford, when I was trying to balance the budget, to pay, the teachers we pay to run an extra, a whole extra period. So essentially, they had to take the period out and consolidate it. And when they did that, they reduced the period, the schedule, from nine periods to eight periods. So, that's kind of, that's how I am seeing we got to this place.
So, and we've discussed maybe having a discussion about this offline, having a discussion offline about possibly changing the schedule for this year. And I know you've said you're very reluctant to consider that, or pessimistic about it's happening, but I mean, I think one thing we need to do is involve Mark, right?
If a change could be made, if a change could be made without seriously impacting the routine that our kids are now in, six weeks in, that obviously can be done. But I mean, if we're talking about wholesale, you know, sending home brand-new schedules, because we have to move this kid, this student to here, this student to there, this change, I mean, that's going to be a big change.
But this is on the agenda for the central leadership team tomorrow, and maybe we can, it would be offline, maybe, and I'm talking about music, maybe we could discuss it as part of that music discussion tomorrow, Scott.
That's a great idea.
I'm up to it.
I'm not trying to shove anything down your throat that you're uncomfortable with, but we, this is not, this is not unreasonable.
Right.
And 20 or 30 minutes, I view, and have viewed, by the way, as a parent of two children who are grown up now, and learn music at Highland Park Middle School and High School, and one of whom sings with a nationally well-known choir that was just at Carnegie Hall, to brag a little, and the son.
Go for it, Mark.
That's my daughter, and my son, and my son, who has taken cello lessons from a chair at the New York Philharmonic. I feel very strongly about music and art, and I was horrified at 20 minutes, as was everyone was. So, I think we should think out of the box, and try to do something better as soon as possible. That's all.
And perhaps tomorrow.
I didn't mean to bring it up again.
Perhaps tomorrow could be a forum for that discussion.
Tomorrow could be a starting place.
Thank you for your patience.
It's okay. Good evening. My name's Karen Bilton. I live at 422 Cedar Avenue. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I wanted to thank all the board members for their time. I know you're all volunteers, and you put in a great deal of time and service to our community, so with that in mind, I'll keep my comments short. I wanted to say I fully support all the statements that the members of the public and the student have said tonight already about the music program, and I wanted to add my comments about the 7:15 a.m. lessons that are also, the students are being told to go to. First of all, telling students to come in at 7:15 a.m. is, in my opinion, terribly unfair to students who are bust. Students who are bust, are bust because of either it's not safe where they live, or they can't walk there for other reasons. And that really places an undue hardship on their families, who may have other schedules, may not be able to get them there at 7:15 a.m. Also, adding instruction time outside of the regular school day just basically sends a message that the music is an extracurricular activity, much like an after-school activity. When the school is unable to give 100% of its instruction time during the school day, it basically says that music is less important than the other academic subjects. So, I, again, want to thank the board members who are speaking tonight about bolstering and improving the music instruction time back to what it was the past couple of years, where it was, it was very good, and it worked very well. So I also strongly urge you to consider the scheduling recommendations that Rob Scott has put forth tonight, to try to save our music program. And one clarification, Dr. Taylor has said a couple of times, that its daily 30-minute classes, my, I have one son in choir, and one son in band, and they are going every other day. They are not going every day, they are going every other day. So there is a miscommunication somewhere in how, I don't know if it's getting across to the teachers, it's not getting across to the students, but I think they would have heard by now if they were missing music every other day. They're going every other day. They're not going daily. Thank you.
I'll have to follow up about that tomorrow.
Yeah, thank you. That would be good enough.
Ms. O, and Mr. Brady.
Yes. We need to know what's actually going on.
I know that this is not appropriate, but can we also try to troubleshoot the communication issue wherever it is falling through? It sounds like there is a serious communication issue between what's going on at the middle school and what you're hearing, Scott. So I would just suggest that we do that. I don't know that we need to name names, but I'm just asking that we please troubleshoot that.
We've learned a lot of new information tonight about the stealing time from other periods, never heard about that before. To clarify, the bus, when does the bus get here from Cedar Lane and the other place?
I always thought the bus usually drops the kids off around 7:25, 7:30.
So not in time for a 7:15 lesson? She was saying that students are being told to come in at 7:15?
Which is why we didn't go. I haven't been touting the idea of doing a before-school lesson. If we did anything, we'd have to, look, first I'd...
But we are doing that now, apparently, where students are being directed, according to the speaker, to come in at 7:15 in the morning. I mean, take that as you, we just heard that testimony. So, have we made any arrangements for buses to come early, or to accommodate students who cannot walk to school?
No, it's just a matter of the buses, the bus routes that we've contracted, not dropping the kids off. We don't have control over when they drop the kids off.
No, no, right, so we shouldn't be offering music lessons at 7:15 in the morning, unless we have an alternative. Apparently, we're telling students, come in at 7:15 for lessons.
So...
So that can't happen.
Okay, understood. Got it.
Right, thank you.
Hi.
Hello, thank you for waiting.
Thank you. I'm Sarah Heimowitz, 216 Graham Street. Thank you for your commitment to our kids and the schools, and thanks for hearing our comments tonight. I have two kids, one in 3rd grade and one in 6th grade, and just on the issue of the music program in the middle school, I would also encourage a reversion to the schedule from last year that seemed to have worked, and it seems like we lost a really good orchestra teacher because of the schedule change. And not only that, I think we're actually losing students. My kid is in 6th grade, and at least three of her friends have dropped out of their music program because of the pullouts and the early morning stuff. So, you know, I would encourage a change to the schedule as soon as possible, with one exception, and that is, 6th graders should not be eating lunch at 10:15, 25 in the morning. I understand the scheduling is complicated, but that seems crazy to me. But the second...
We're used to it now.
I know, yeah.
My kid's kind of used to it, but yes.
I know.
I know, I know.
It's only one year, but...
It's crazy, though. Let's try not to do it if we can.
The second issue I wanted to present tonight is actually one that's not been raised, and probably because most people don't know about it, but I received last week an email from the Bartle principal, and I don't want this to be about her at all, because as I understand, she's doing a great job. But the email was to 3rd grade parents, because there's a professor in the Rutgers Graduate School of Education, I believe, who's invited 50 students from the 3rd grade to attend a storytelling conference at the Hyatt on October 25th, I believe. And so the way it's going to work is that you submit your permission slip for your kid, and then there'll be a lottery, where 50 kids will be chosen, and they'll take a bus to the Hyatt.
The Hunger Games.
I think it's wrong to have any program where only half the grade, you know, probably it's a little bit more than 100, I don't know, but pretty much is 50%. I don't think there should be any field trip where only half the grade goes, especially in 3rd grade. That's a hard one to explain, and there's no need for it. If this, you know, it's kind of presented like we were, every year, the professor chooses a different school to invite the kids. It's not really a favor to us. A favor would be driving three minutes from the Hyatt to Bartle to tell a story to all the kids.
Yes.
And I don't know who's paying for that transportation. The kids could just walk, frankly, but I don't think it should be us. If the Graduate School of Education at Rutgers really wants to do us a favor, and give us the honor of inviting 50 of our students, they can pay for transportation, too. I've suggested bringing the storyteller here. I know it's not possible, but I don't think we should be doing this, I don't think we should be doing anything where only half of the 3rd grades invited, and we certainly shouldn't be paying for it. And I'm not sure if we are or not, I'm just saying, I don't know who's paying for the transportation, but it shouldn't be us, especially under these tight budget circumstances.
It has not shown up on any of our curriculum field trip reports or lists, so I don't think we're paying for it.
It's not, I don't think we're paying for it. But I, this is the first I'm hearing about. Next, in the future, just reach out to me, and I'll be glad to try to work through this, because I like to know about these things ahead of time. So, I'll look into it, but I'm not aware of what's paying for any transportation for this event.
So I think the message there, too, is to make sure that our principals convey this information to you, rather than having parents have to come to you and say, like, I got a message from my principal. I mean, that's something I think, I think as the school district moves through time, we learn about things that come up that maybe it would have been good to know about. So maybe proactively in the future, we want to, you know, we want to say, like, hey, if this kind of thing comes up, this has been controversial in the past, please let me know.
Yeah, and just to be fair and for the record, Ms. Knapp was doing something very nice.
Oh, I love Ms. Knapp.
The Graduate School of Education should know better.
Oh, of course, of course. Ms. Knapp is a wonderful person. This is a strange thing for the GSE to offer. We very much appreciate our partnership with the GSE, and we're very grateful to them in so many ways, but this particular...
I'll look into the...
...event sounds a little difficult for 3rd graders. It's a valuable life lesson, though, don't you think? You know, half of you will be chosen, half will...
Can I just clarify, this is the third item on the field.
Oh, it is. Good lord, that's embarrassing. Thank you, Chris. We need our new board members to read this very carefully.
Before we continue, can we let the students reps go?
Could we just...
Unless they have to stay. It's up to you guys.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Close to 10 o'clock.
I just forgot.
We'll come right back to this.
There's also a friend of mine who wanted to be here to also talk about the music program, but she wasn't able to because of homework and scheduling conflicts. But yeah, there's another high school student that also cares very much about this, and yeah, wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you so much for letting us know.
So, the field trip list, the third item, Chris is right, it's for a storytelling event. My assumption, looking at this, it says that it's not to exceed $600 for transportation. It usually tells us on the last column, where it says comments, how many students, and how many staff, and how many parents. It looks like, from what I can see on this list, we are paying for the transportation and, you know, attendance of two parents and two staff. Looking at this, it looks like the entire 3rd grade is going.
There's no indication on our...
So, I apologize for saying that it did not show up on our list, because it is right here. Thank you, Chris. But it doesn't look like it's what you're saying, it's very misleading.
Yeah.
So I very much appreciate more information.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be a valuable thing to share with the principals, that this has been controversial. We've had a couple of issues like this in the past, I can't remember exactly, but where certain students, it was a law... certain students, it was a lottery-type situation, and principals may not be aware that that can be very difficult for our children, children. So, perhaps they could be counseled to advise you when this happens.
We could discuss that, yes.
Please make sure that we know about this in advance next time.
Okay.
However that happens.
In the meantime, I'll follow up with the board about this particular issue. I'd like to know more about the background.
Sure, sure.
I just also would like to say very clearly that I wouldn't want anyone in the audience to be discouraged from coming up and telling us about these things. I know that it's embarrassing for us, but we can handle it. You don't need to go in secret to discuss it so that we have advanced notice and are embarrassed in public. So, please don't feel that, you know, you did anything wrong by.
We welcome our embarrassment.
Thank you. But I would just like to say that very publicly.
Good night, guys.
Good night.
Good night.
Could I ask a question about the lunch schedule, which I wondered about for the last five years? And it's in front of me now, so I could actually ask.
Go for it, yeah.
Why can't, why are the, why were and are the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders eating so early? I mean, the current schedule and this proposed schedule, they start at ten, whatever, you know, ten fifteen or ten twenty-five. Is this room use for something else at twelve thirty-four?
I can't answer that question. I didn't do that schedule, but.
It may have been a rhetorical question, but I'd love an answer.
There was a time when we had all the middle school students eat together.
Yes.
In the high school cafeteria. So, when Ms. O tried to focus on the middle school identity, she brought this cafeteria back to life. So, I'm wondering out loud if there's a, the only way to break the kids into three groups was to break it down during these times. I mean, the last lunch finishes on the later side, twelve fifty.
But I mean, I eat lunch every day at twelve thirty and, you know, so do most people. They eat at twelve, twelve fifteen, twelve thirty. So, what would be wrong with, even in the current program, eleven fourteen to twelve, twelve oh three to twelve forty-nine? Yes, twelve forty-nine is a little late. I mean, I agree, but in the last year's schedule, which was proposed, the last lunch would be twelve thirty-four to eleven, to one seventeen. That's not outrageous. It's certainly better than ten sixteen or ten twenty-four or whatever it is. Just something to think about. And again, thinking out of the box about making the kids' lives better, you know, not to mention coming in at seven o'clock.
If I remember from when it was presented two years ago, when we originally had the middle school schedule revision so that we could avoid having the, all the pullouts and other things and reduce some of the block scheduling, I think it was related to having four periods in a row of class time.
Oh, I see.
We were looking to have some sort of break rather than.
I see.
Which is why.
Oh, I understand, I understand. Well.
I vaguely remember that response, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Anything is better than ten sixteen lunch, which is absurd, completely ridiculous and absurd, or ten twenty-five lunch.
I don't know, when I was in school, the sooner the better is what I thought. Lunch, please. It was nine thirty, I was ready to eat, but yes.
I was at the apex of the baby boom and I was in a high school with fourteen hundred, in a graduating class. So, there were fourteen hundred times three, whatever, forty-two hundred students. And I was, as a sophomore, we started in tenth grade, I was coming in at seven to twelve. And when I was a senior, I was coming in eleven to four.
Wow.
Or eleven to five. I mean, it was absurd. Only, or maybe when I was a junior, when I was a senior, I got normal hours. And everyone, a whole generation of people in New York got those kind of programs. And it was equally absurd, you know, we ate lunch at ten o'clock or we ate lunch at three o'clock. It was absurd. This is, there's no reason in this school building to have absurd times like this.
I think that, from a mother's point of view, I'm feeling that, you know, if my kids are eating lunch or even breakfast or brunch at ten, they're starving by the end of the day. So, I'm more concerned about the end of the day. Do they have time for?
Yes.
Anything, like a snack? I mean, they need protein to get through the rest of the day.
I watched my middle school grandchildren eat. We went out to dinner last night in Chinatown and my grandson had two hands going for about an hour, just stop, you know, eating as much as he possibly could. So, this would not work for him.
No.
All right. Do we have it? Oh, sorry, go ahead, Michelle.
No, I just, I really do feel like scheduling is such a huge problem in so many different areas that we talk about. I feel like we always come back to the schedule. It feels like that to me. So, this is really like the center where all the spokes come from. And I would love for us to take a look at, you know, other schools. I'd suggested to Dr. Taylor that we take a look at the VOTEC programs because they're running three and a half hours in the morning dedicated to whatever programs those children are studying, and then in the afternoons, they're doing their academics. So, can we possibly learn anything from the way that they do things? I think it's worth a look, but we're not a VOTEC, let's be honest. I just feel like we need to be focusing on scheduling. That really is the center of lots of our conversation.
It's pretty amazing, yeah. Well, Dr. Taylor, Mr. Krieger, we look forward to hearing about your discussion tomorrow.
Try to get something in on it.
Yeah, excellent. Yes, sir?
No, I just wanted to.
Yeah, yeah, I wasn't going to go right to adjournment, as tempted as I was. Any other public comments? Okay, now is the time for the acting president's report. I don't really have a report. There are two, I did want to bring up an issue with committee assignments or commission assignments, I'm sorry. We have liaisons to most of the commissions in the borough, but we have missed two of the newer commissions, the Commission on Immigrant and Refugee Affairs and the new Equity Commission. So, I think perhaps at the next meeting, I'd like to suggest that we appoint liaisons to those commissions. I haven't yet heard back from the chairs of the commissions about whether they are open to this. I assume they will be, but I don't want to proceed before I hear from them. So, please, everybody, think about whether you might be interested in serving as a liaison to the Immigrant and Refugee Affairs Commission or the Equity Commission. All right. What was the other thing? Oh, Scott, when we talk about the agenda for next time, I don't know if we have time next week to talk about board goals or if we want to put that off. What does our schedule look like?
It's up to the board. I mean, I, it's up, really, it's up to the board, I'm sorry, but we are behind. We should have the board goals in place by now.
Yes.
So, unless, if you're worried about time, it's going to be a long meeting. I've got a couple of presentations, I have several follow-ups, but.
Okay.
Something we can discuss, if you'd like, beforehand, unless the board has a different mindset about that.
Yeah, how do board members feel? What is the, what mandates that we have the board goals done by a certain time? Is it just best practice for us to know what we're doing? Okay. Well, you know what? Why don't we, maybe we could set aside like half an hour for board goals at the next meeting, and if it seems like it's going to take longer than that, if we get into like a, you know, real back-and-forth, then we put it off until the next meeting. Would that be okay?
Yeah, and the first thing, as a starting point, is to just go back and review what's in place from this past year.
Yes. I will, I think we already have a document that's live. If, I'll make sure, I'll try to recirculate the link to those who might not have it. Now, we can't all comment on the same document because that would be potentially making decisions about board business without the public, you know, as a quorum. We're not supposed to have a Google document and have nine people discussing it. So, what I suggest is that everybody look at the document.